Okay, everybody, we're going to call our meeting to order and welcome all of you to our meeting this evening. We're going to have a roll call first by our City Clerk Kathy Valdez.
The records show that all members are present.
Next thing we're going to do is our Pledge of Allegiance on our invocation. And our Pledge of Allegiance tonight is going to be led by Councilmember Rigby. And our invocation will be from Pastor Chris Lung by the Living Stream Christian Church of San Diego. So if you want to come up, then we'll do our pledge first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Almighty God, Creator and sustainer of all that is or will ever be, accept our thanks for all the blessings, opportunities, and responsibilities that before us as members of this great city of Vista. And on behalf of the members of this city, we thank everyone in this governing body, our dear mayor, our beloved councils, and city officials, for their faithful and diligent services to this city. We pray also for every member of this governing body, and that they are ever mindful of opportunities to render their services to fellow citizens into our community, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting their efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Together, let us continue to strive to make this city a better place for its residents and a better world for all. We ask you, Lord of the universe, to guide us with your purpose, to guide and direct our city, its leaders, and our actions, anoint our bodies, minds, and spirits with your blessings so that we can be of faithful and diligent service to you and this great community. Help us to do good, to be good, but most importantly, help us to serve, in the name of our dear Lord. Amen.
In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos sanitation district will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos sanitation district ordinance 2006-1. And the next thing is the approval of our agenda by our City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There is one change this evening to the agenda. We are going to remove item C9, which is the agreement with Chef DK Catering for the Moonlight Amphitheater Food and Beverage Services. So that will be removed from the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the next thing, our City Attorney Darryl Piper will bring us out of our closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The council did meet in closed session this evening to discuss the items on the agenda CS1. No action was taken. There is nothing to be reported.
Okay, the next thing is our consent calendar, and we're going to do items C1 through C17, all in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. And we have one motion. Is this removed from the calendar? Okay. We have one motion. Let's see, let me finish this. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the Clerk's secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. So we have actually 16 consent items this evening, and so I have one removed by the public, and that's item C6, which is the CVBID update. And then anybody in the council have anything? Councilmember Aguilera?
Yeah, I'd like to remove C17 for discussion.
Okay.
And I'd go ahead and make a motion for the balance of the consent calendar to approve.
Okay. Do I have a second on that? Okay. Okay, that motion. Now, please vote. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. So then we will go first to item C6. So...
Would you like a gender report, a staff report?
Do we just staff report? Anybody? I don't see any...
Public.
Yeah. So let's hear from the public. So Cliff Kaiser?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm here to remind the council of a few pertinent items related to the Central Vista Business Improvement District and the VVBA. I am not here on behalf of either of those. I'm here to simply share my commentary. The VVBA has been administering the Business Improvement District in downtown for over 20 years. The bid is somewhat a self-assessed tax on merchants for the promotion of the downtown. This past year, that assessment came to about $58,000. The city has regularly supplemented that amount with an additional $40,000 supplemental grant from the general fund. During the last request for proposal period or process, the VVBA was informed that the annual grant would be reduced to $20,000 next year and zero thereafter. The VVBA's general purpose revenue sources today have been downtown events. Many of them very good, some of them not so. Although different events have occurred over time, there is no trend indicating event revenue will increase to offset the loss of the city supplemental grant. It is my opinion, given the current and past VVBA trends, that the organization will cease to exist without that supplemental grant or other revenue source. Although we're a year and a half out until that comes, we need to plan now or address, start thinking about how we're going to deal with that. So what to do? I offer four comments. We can do more or better events. This has been tried repeatedly with limited success. Any new event generally takes several years to create significant income. The city could reassess the plan to terminate or reduce the supplemental grant. The bid fees could be raised. The VVBA and the city could solicit merchants to increase their self-assessed fee. This was last done over 11 years ago in 2006. Some of the merchants, perhaps many, question the return on their investment of that assessment. The 2006 bid fee increase almost led to a merchant termination of the bid entirely. Basically, the VVBA's got to prove value if the merchants don't want to get themselves taxed and give it to the VVBA to make things happen. And fourthly, the downtown merchants are not excited about the foot traffic in downtown. Downtown is a gathering place, and in my opinion, a worthy investment for the entire community, just like the wave in the moonlight is. Without the VVBA and/or the Business Improvement District, per se, the city will need some other vehicle to promote the downtown. You all know that the VVBA has a storied past, but has had glimmers of hope over the past three to four years. I would say one part of the challenge has been how the city communicates with downtown, both the VVBA and the merchants. Some recent examples, the new sushi place near Lush is building a trash enclosure behind Village Pub. VVBA didn't know about it. The downtown merchants didn't know about it. Broadway lighting. The VVBA has long lobbied to have lighting and power put in the garden areas, the planters and the poles, to put Christmas lighting like they have on Main Street for a very long time. The city invested a huge power and lighting contract to improve that downtown, but they ignored that request entirely. The VVBA...
You know what, Cliff? Your three minutes are up, and I forgot to watch the timer. So it's my fault, but you have to wrap up.
Okay. Let me just close by saying that there's, I have a whole list, five or six of those items, that have not been communicated well, that things are happening without the merchants or the VVBA knowing about them. And the most recent one is very simple, but still absurd, that they curbed off the entrance to the citrus parking lot, and nobody knew it was coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from the council, or do you want to... On this... Councilmember Aguilera? Did you want to say something? No, you're the other thing. Okay. Councilmember Rigby?
I want to say thank you for your comments, Mr. Kaiser. Very much appreciated. With that, I would go ahead and move that we accept the report from the VVBA.
Councilmember Franklin? Deputy Mayor?
I'll second that motion and also second your appreciation for Mr. Kaiser's remarks and just close by saying I think Mr. Kaiser's right. I think we need to take a look at the future of the VVBA. We did extensive outreach and asked the merchants if they wanted to do something new and different there, and I think that idea was not met with success. And so it's definitely something we need to have further talks about and really drill down with our community leaders in the downtown business district.
I agree with you because I think it'd be tragic if we lost the VVBA. I mean, our downtown is the window to our city, and we need to keep it looking nice. And I think that's the organization to do it. So, and I'm sorry about the communication thing. We need to get better communication with them. And yeah, so actually, Councilmember Green is going to be their liaison to their committee, and so maybe he can help with that a little bit, and we can have a conversation with that. So I have a motion. Did you ask the same, Councilmember Aguilera?
Well, I was just going to say that, what you said, and hopefully Councilman Green can come back with some ideas and some communication to the council and staff, and we can better that relationship.
Okay, with that, we have a motion and a second. So cast your votes, please. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, the next item that was pulled on our calendar was item C17, Amendment to the Capital Improvement Budget for the fiscal year 2017-18 for sidewalks in the Townsite Neighborhood, CIP 8290. And so Councilmember Aguilera?
Yeah, I just pulled this because I think it's important for the city to know where their tax dollars are being spent and the effort we're going through. As many of you know, Vista was incorporated back in 1963, but there's been a lot of roads in Vista developed prior to 1963. And really, even a lot of our roads that were developed post-1963 were developed without sidewalks and curbs and gutters. And that has put our council and our city kind of in a tough spot trying to basically recover. This is a good effort on our part, I believe, and staff's part, to go ahead and fix some of the roads that we have and make roads safer for children to walk to school and for everybody to be on, you know, walking on our streets. But also, you know, it does help with contaminants because it does help with the runoff and that as well. So I would just like to have staff quickly kind of go through the area where we're actually making these improvements so that we can inform the public. Thank you.
Okay, with that, would you make a motion?
If you could just show the area.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So this is Tim Schell, our principal engineer, who will talk about the area.
All right. Thank you very much for bringing that up. We'd be happy to show the public where we're building sidewalks. This is in the Townsite area, kind of circling around North Santa Fe, focused on the area between East and Cananea Street and West and East Indian Rock Road, as you see on the map that you have before you. And what we're doing is filling in gaps between existing sidewalks and doing our best to make these improvements at the lowest cost possible. So we are installing sidewalks and walkways on one side of the road so that there's a safe route through the area and saving future monies for other areas that don't have sidewalks. And where we have curbs, we're putting in concrete sidewalks. And where we don't have curbs, we're looking at putting in a less expensive alternative, which is an AC walkway. So you'll see that along this area as you go out there and look at some of these improvements that we've already completed. We've completed the sections along East Indian Rock Road between East and Cananea. We've completed the sidewalks there on Cananea between Citrus and Indian Rock. And we've completed a section of sidewalk, or working on a section of sidewalk, on West Indian Rock to the, just to the west of North Santa Fe. So the sections that we're asking for, for some additional funding, is the sections there to the west on West Indian Rock over by Woodrail and Bobolink.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just really excited because I grew up just off West Indian Rock on Legan, and that's the same condition it's been since I was a kid, which at this point, unfortunately, was a long time ago. You know, these roads have been there forever, long before I was even a child there. So just, I was at Boe Beer School this morning, and there's a lot of kids there. The families walk to school. You know, a lot of schools, you'll see a lot of traffic because the parents are dropping them off, but this is one of those schools. It's a neighborhood school, and there's a lot of walking that goes on at that school. So I think this would be a great addition to our city, and I applaud this. So I'll make a motion to accept.
Okay, actually, I'll second your motion. So anybody else have anything that want to say? Okay, with that, we'll cast your votes. Okay, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, and the next thing, we're through with our consent calendar, so we're going to go into public hearings, but just, I have several...
Go to the public hearing first.
Okay. So we're going to, there's one public hearing this evening. It's a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the Camino Largo 8 annexation and reorganization. And so our public hearing is now open. Our Director of Community Development and Engineering, John Conley, will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Patse Chao, our Deputy Director and City Planner, will be presenting the staff report.
Patse Chao, Deputy Director, Community Development, City Planner, pleased to be here this evening to present this item before you, which is a proposed annexation, the tentative subdivision map for Camino Largo 8. So the proposed project is an annexation, pre-zoning, and a tentative subdivision map that would allow for the creation of eight single-family residential lots. They range in size from 1 acre to 1.26 net acres at a proposed density of .86 dwelling units per acre. The total site area is about nine acres. There would be associated drainage improvements, wet and dry utilities, and there's also a creation accompanied by a private street that's named Camino Largo. I would like to point out that there are no homes that are being proposed at this time, but when the homes are developed and built in the future, they would have to comply with the A1 zone requirements. So this area photo showing the proposed site, lightning red, and the pre-zoning again for the site is A1, which is agricultural, a zone, which is a minimum of 1 acre lot size. And the existing general plan designation for the site is RR, which is rural residential, which allows a maximum density of 1 dwelling unit per acre. Just wanted to point out the adjacent surrounding designations per general plan. To the south, we have low-density residential at 2 dwelling units per acre. Further south to that, we have residential development at Sandalwood. Across the street, North Santa Fe, we have the Iguahome Regional Park. And further to that, to the south, is the Iguahome Park Academy School. Some key issues for consideration is related to the general plan in terms of consistency with the document. Again, the lots ranging in size from 1 to 1.26 net acres, which is basically consistent with the RR or rural residential designation for the site, as well as the A1 zone. The project, this proposal would be consistent with the surrounding land uses as well as zoning, and it would be consistent with the land use and community identity policies in the general plan pertaining to annexations, which basically encourages annexation of pocket areas of unincorporated land that are, in this case, designated rural residential. In terms of drainage and sewer, it would, the project would be connecting to an existing sewer system that's along Camino Largo, and there will be proposed water improvements as well that would eventually connect to existing utilities along North Santa Fe in terms of water and sewer. And the project will also be helping improve existing onsite drainage conditions as it gets developed. So this is a photo of the project site, looking straight at it from North Santa Fe Avenue. And previously, it was operated for, as a nursery with palm trees, et cetera. This is the tentative subdivision map showing the eight proposed lots. Camino Largo is a private street that will help provide access to the eight lots. And there are a total of seven bioretention basins that are located, as indicated in the blue circles, the blue oval areas, to address stormwater issues onsite. This is the landscape plan that meets the landscape ordinance in our code, and there will be street trees provided, slope erosion control, as you can see it on this drawing, with the use of native and non-native plant materials. So from September 18th to October 19th of 2015, a mitigated NAGDAC document was prepared to meet the requirements of SEQA, and it was available for public review. The city received five comment letters. We provided responses to all the comment letters we received. And again, just as kind of a review, the general plan as far as development code and design guidelines, the proposed density falls below the maximum of 1 unit per acre per the general plan. And again, future homes would have to meet the development standards of the A1 zone. At the October 17th meeting this year, 2017, the planning commission recommended the subject project for approval. And the staff's recommendation, or the recommendation from the planning commission, is for the approval of the mitigated NAGDAC and the monitoring and reporting program, as well as resolution for the application to LAFCO for the annexation reorganization. And last but not least, a resolution to approve the tentative map and the zone change, the pre-zoning to A1. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
I have two speakers. Do you want to hear the speakers first, council? Okay. The first one would be Fred Kim.
Mayor, council members, staff, my name's Rod Bradley. Fred doesn't want to speak.
Okay.
And you didn't give him a little box to check that he just didn't want to speak. He just wanted to register his position, asking you to approve his project. So anyway, I'm with BHA 5115 Avenue, Dean Sinis, we're the engineers and planners on the project, and we're here to seek your approval as well and to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay. Council, Councilmember Green?
Right. So I reviewed this item in depth, and I reviewed your, what is that, the M&amp;D report pretty thoroughly, looked like from a traffic standpoint and things, and nothing was, you know, really too big of a concern. I just wanted to clarify, you said that we received some comment letters, and I didn't see any from citizens. They were all from like the, you know, the band of Indians that have to come look over the property. They were from environmentalists. So just from a community standpoint, we've sent out all of our notifications, and no actual members of our community have stepped up or reasonably communicated their opposition to this annexation, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I was looking at the same comments. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not particularly opposed to this project. I just want to put out there on the record that this proposal, this project, is being approved as presented, that this would be, the zoning would stay A1, and it would be the general plan amendment, a minimum of 1 dwelling unit per acre. Sometimes we approve these things, and then after a couple of years, and I see it's already been two years since that M&amp;D went out, I'm not sure, you know, why the two years have gone by, but sometimes we see these come back again after they get something approved, and they want to come back, and they want to change the general plan, or they want to change the zoning for something different. And that is not what we're doing here. We're approving this as it's presented, making sure that it stays for the 1 unit per acre. So I just want to put that out there, just curb that appetite right here, right now. So thank you.
Deputy Mayor Franklin?
I agree with Councilwoman Rigby. I'd like to see these developed as so 1 acre, 1 unit to the acre, and wouldn't be in favor at any point in the future of changing that. But that said, I would make a motion that we adopt staff's recommendation, close the public hearing.
Okay. Councilmember Aguilera?
I'll second it.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, I would ask you to cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, so that is the end of our public hearings. We just had the one, and the next thing, we're going into our discussion items. I have a question for the council here. We have six people here for an issue on Mormons, and we have a really loaded agenda tonight, so I was wondering if you would want to take them first, maybe the six speakers for the oral communications, and then we could go into all of our discussion items because we have, we have several that are going to take a couple hours, a few hours, I think. So would you guys, with the Mormons people, would you like to go first now, first? Are you waiting for other people to come later? I guess we could take them later after the meeting, but it's going to be a couple hours before we get to oral communications. So I'm asking the Mormons people, shake your head, yes or no? Would you like to speak now?
Yes.
Where are you? Over here. I'm looking, I'm looking the wrong places here. Okay, you'd like to speak? Yes. Okay, so I'll take you guys next then on the agenda. So we'll start with Danny Orsburn.
I'm not with them.
You're not with them?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, then, I'll put you over here. Hold on. Well, maybe you're not then.
Yeah.
Let's see, so... Should I go, is Mark Carpenter with them?
Why aren't you just...
Well, I'll just take, I'll just take all of you guys. So come on up. I'll take you two.
I want to talk about something related to this at all.
It's okay. Doesn't matter. I'm taking oral communications right now. Just because we have a long agenda tonight.
I'll be short.
Okay.
My name is Danny Orsburn. I live at 820 Francis Drive, and I'm here to talk again about illegal marijuana distribution centers in the city. I really need some help. There's no police presence, and these people are wild. They have no consideration for a neighborhood, community, or family, or children. They sell drugs to 13, 14-year-old kids that walk in. They don't have a permit or a medical marijuana card. I just need your help. That's basically why. I'm pleading for your help. There's no police presence.
Is it the one, you're on Francis?
812 Francis Drive. Yeah, that's there.
I think that our sheriff, everybody knows about that, but sometimes it takes us a long time. We have to go through a process in order to shut things down.
I do understand that, but the security guard comes out into the street with a pistol on his hip to protect the people bringing the illegal drugs, right now they're illegal, into the building, and it's not a safe situation. Nine sheriffs came up, parked on Newport, which is around the corner, walked up to my gate, and they said, "Mr. Orsburn, really sorry. There is nothing we can do."
It is.
That doesn't make a tax-paying citizen feel very good. That's all I'm trying to tell you.
I agree with you.
Okay?
Yeah.
So thank you for your time.
We do whatever we can. We're doing our best, so.
I understand. I talk to...
It's not great, I know.
Terry Wilson quite often, and I'm sure he feels the same way.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. We appreciate that. Okay, Mark Carpenter?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm here also to speak on the same issue. I've spoken here several times before, and I wanted to thank the attorney, Darryl Piper, and Deputy Mayor John Franklin and John Aguilar for responding to all my requests and our help in getting the issue initially resolved for a moment. As you know, they were closed down for a moment. The one next to my neighbor's house recently reopened, and the one across the street from my house is currently open as we speak. It is a very severe problem. I think it is beyond what the city is recognizing now. I have confronted several people there. The last person that I confronted was a Middle Eastern gentleman. He refused to give me his business card. He would not give me his name. When I took his photograph, he came back, took a picture of my license plate, told me that they were not going to be leaving, that they were going to stay there at all costs. So I might encourage people to seek some outside sources. As I've spoken before, my background is in the criminal justice system, dealing with the most severe level of criminality. I've observed every gang known that has been in existence in the state of California, and I've observed the activity over there, and I assure you, none of them are the ones that are conducting this. I think it's a lot deeper than that, and it's a grave concern. I see some council members have moved away from the area, the Townsite area. I personally chose to move there. I've invested 14 years of my life investing in my home and in the neighborhood there. And we need some help getting it resolved there. As I've stated, it's a bad problem. We had a moment of peace, but now it is getting bad. I myself, every time I leave my house, I feel like I got a target on my back. Saturday, I drove past, and there was a line of 20 people waiting to get into the place, and they were not happy. They were very disruptive. They're near K-12 bus stops, that, they're near bus stops with special needs children, and they really need to go. I would highly recommend that a multidisciplinary team is put together... I would highly recommend that a multidisciplinary team is put together, that regulations are put in place, that we get some places that are out in the open, and that we get people the medical assistance they need at some places that are not hidden, that can be held accountable, and that have transparency. Our community in the townsite area, we do not want it there hidden. We would like it out in the open. That's what the decision is made. Please do that, initiate it, and let's get some plans in action, and let's roll it out and get it done. Please. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Ann Donovan. Oh, got you all on one thing. Alice, is Doug Holt with you, and James Foster? Oh, okay.
And there might be more in the audience. I'm not aware if any others did come.
Are you on the same issue?
Yes.
Okay. Did you turn on speaker slips? Did you turn on speakers?
I turned on speakers.
Oh, okay. Just let us know you're with them. Okay. Okay. And you each have three minutes.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, my name is Alice Salisbury, and I dropped this off to all of you. I hope you all received it and had a moment to look at it. I know everyone's busy, but this is an issue that is out of control in our neighborhood. It's actually right on East Vista Way, visible to any and everyone that comes into our community. You talk about the window to our community in the downtown area. This is a window at the other end of town, and it's not only, and this is nine, 10 years that it's been here, and we've all come several times, we've come to the meetings, we've called numerous times, as I laid out in my paperwork, trying to get help with this, and now we're in our 10th year, and it looks worse than ever. It's a danger. There've been fires. We've had all kinds of illegal activity going on there. Police have been called numerous times. And at this point, we, and I do understand that the city has, they can only do so much, because it's private property, but that maybe needs to be addressed, too, because it's a business. So, business needs to be held to a higher standard, especially a business that is so visible to everyone coming in. To be allowed to be in that disrepair and to be such a danger to our community, you know, it's not a good situation. So, we would like, and we have 80 signatures, that just not even trying, we've got a lot of people behind us on this, that want it to be declared a public nuisance. I think it would be appropriate to put it on the agenda as soon as you're able to do that, so that we can really discuss it and come up with a solution to this. So, that's my thoughts, and I'm sure others have thoughts as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to share my point on it, as we've been, I've been here three times on this same issue. You know, it's now, the windows are broken out, kids are going in and out, smoking pot at night inside the windows, and I don't know how somebody hasn't been hurt. You know, we just, the place was a mess. They cleaned it up like a week ago with mattresses and all the stuff that's been there. But it's been a 10-year problem with us having graffiti. I mean, I've probably called 15 times with graffiti. They've been good. They come out and get it within a week's time, but it is truly a nuisance, and it's such an eyesore coming in from, here we are, we've done all this 76 work and people coming in. Have you noticed the traffic on that street at night? It's horrendous. And it's, for me, I paid a lot of money for my house, and I think I told you the last time I was here, I'm very disappointed that I did move to Vista, because of the way that the whole neighborhood is just, this looks terrible today. And I really think that we, as citizens, deserve better from our leaders to try to fix this problem. I mean, they need to tear that building down and level it, and let's let it be an empty lot or something, but kids are in there at night, and we're calling the police, it's a nuisance to them.
And the fires.
Yeah, and they've had two fires in this. There's illegal drugs going on, and we realize you guys have lots of things on your plate, but this is a 10-year issue for somebody that paid well over a million dollars for his house. I'm 100 yards from this thing, and it's just, it's just, it's just a nightmare for us. So, and right behind it, there's another problem. You know, it's just a little crack house there that's, but, you know, I don't want to blabber it. That's, I wanted to make sure, this is my third time here, and it's, nothing's happened, so.
Are you Doug? You're Doug?
I'm Doug.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I have your card there, so. And actually, I agree with you, so.
Hi, I'm James Foster. I live on Prince Way with these folks. We have a lovely street, beautiful homes on that street. Everybody that comes to visit us says, "What in the hell is that on the corner of East Vista Way and Warmlands?" We say, "That's an abandoned Shell gas station that's been there, looking like that and worse, for years." We've been to many meetings here at the council, we've called code enforcement, I spoke to them again today, planning, spoke to them again today, and, well, we're working on it. We're working on it. But we don't see anything happening. Nothing. Zero. Maybe little bits getting done here and there. We don't see it, and we're thoroughly disgusted with it. We feel you folks aren't doing anything about it. We would love to have your assistance and straighten this out. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just as an ending to that, declaring it a public nuisance, from what I understand, would give the city some teeth. That's what I'm told, anyway, and maybe putting it on the agenda to discuss that. So, that's, those two issues are my biggest request at this point.
I know the code goes out there like every day, once a day, that's there, they go out there to check on it and that, and so, and I absolutely agree with all of you. I wish, I wish we could bulldoze it, but it is private property, it has a new owner as of August, and so, the problem is, we've issued citations to him, and so, he has another citation that expires, I believe, on Monday. So, but, I mean, I'm going to write a letter, before we try to put it on the agenda, I'm going to write a letter to the owner and ask him to please tell them that we're, you know, the council is very upset with it, and ask him to please clean it up. I don't know if he could put a fence around it again, I don't think that's the total answer. He has some plans into planning to redevelopment, apparently, but he hasn't moved forward very much on that, he's not in a hurry, so I'll write a letter to him and see if I can, I don't know if that'll help any, but see if I can push him a little bit, and then after Monday, we'll see what happens. Well, he'll get another citation on Monday, so.
And that's something that maybe the city needs to look at. Why do you not have?
I need you on the microphone.
Yeah. Why does the city not have more teeth to do this? And that's, just respectfully suggesting that maybe you need to think about that, because a property owner should not be allowed to do what he's doing.
I agree. Maybe our attorney can talk about a little bit. Daryl, can you act about a public nuisance, how it's tough to, I think, to get a public nuisance?
Ultimately, the public nuisance has to go to court and be able to convince a judge that the private property rights should be overridden, and that a building which may or may not have economic value, the government is entitled to bulldoze it and get rid of it. And to be very candid, the courts are not particularly receptive to that level of intervention, particularly here in the North County. Having said that, it's still an avenue that can be looked at and potentially pursued, but certainly success cannot be guaranteed in light of the property rights that are involved.
Yeah, I understand.
So, let's wait till Monday, and I'll write a letter and see if we get a response on that, and we'll get back to you, and if we need to have a neighborhood meeting, I'm happy to come, and we can talk about it and see what we can do from there.
Well, thank you. We just appreciate you all taking us seriously. I think that's really where we are at this point, you know. We need help.
Well, I agree with you. It does need help, so.
There were others that signed, I don't know if they would speak.
I'm Ann Donovan, and one of my concerns was people that gather at this gas station, doing all these illegal things, wander into our neighborhood, and they wander through our property at, you know, various times of the day and night, and it's scary. I'm worried about who's going to, you know, break into my house. I haven't had that happen, but, you know, people just hanging out on the street who we know don't live there, who don't look, you know, well-capt. So, it's not a good place.
I agree with you. We need to do something, so we'll put some pressure on them and see, and then go from there. And if we have to agendize it, we will.
Thank you so much for letting us speak before all the rest of the business.
Yeah, you won't wait for three hours. Did you want to say something, Deputy Mayor?
I just wanted to make a quick comment to both the folks on the Warmlands issue, as well as the folks who came to speak on the marijuana issue, and I just want to reiterate to everybody that your priorities are our priorities. You're our neighbors, and what's affecting you and your enjoyment of your homes, we're very concerned about, and know that I think most of us have had one-on-one conversations with staff. I personally brought the photographs that you delivered to us and had a conversation with staff about it, and we're very concerned that we're making Vista a great place for you to live, and don't want anybody to feel like they regret their decision to live in this city. So, we take that really seriously, and we are really committed to doing something, and I personally, you know, would look very strongly at that public nuisance issue and whether that's the right path. I'd like to hear more about that. So, thank you to all of you who came to speak on that issue and on the illegal dispensary issue. Those are big priorities for us, and we take them very seriously.
Okay. And I have one last speaker, and then we're going to move on to our discussion items. So, Chad Spinks, take them, and then we'll move on. Where is Chad? Okay, I'll bring him up at the end. Okay. Okay, then, moving on, we're going to, this is, we're going to do our discussion items. We have two discussion items, and the first one is Bub Williamson Park project elements. Our Assistant City Manager, Ally Zimmerman, is going to introduce the item, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is a revisiting of the Bub Williamson Park project. Assistant to the City Manager and Park Project Manager, Tony Winnie, will present the staff
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The Bub Williamson Park Improvement Project was previously approved by the City Council as a part of the fiscal years 2015, 16, 16, 17, and 17, 18 capital improvement program budgets. On November 10th, 2015, the City Council approved the design-build contract of $281,000 for the design, with plans to return to the City Council to obtain approval of the construction at a later date. The park's preliminary designs were completed in March of 2017. This park was previously chosen for capital improvements due to deficiency of park space in West Vista, the age of the park, and needs for updates to the facility, as well as the desire to activate the park to discourage criminal activities. West Vista is currently deficient in park space, with the closest parks being Breeze Hill Park in the south and Vista Sports Park in northern Vista. The park currently has two softball fields, a passive-use area, and seating, and restrooms. At the September 26, 2017 City Council meeting, the City Council directed staff to remove the proposed soccer arena from the project plans, and to hold design workshops to solicit ideas from the public on amenities that they might like to see, including any future renovations to the park. The currently, the currently proposed redesign of Bub Williamson Park includes remodeling of the existing restrooms, a new children's playground, an off-leash fenced dog park, new site furnishings, including benches, tables, water fountains, et cetera, new open space and turf area, shade structures, picnic areas, new lighting, and drought-tolerant landscaping and irrigation. All development would occur within the current park footprint and would not infringe upon the adjacent wooded area running along the western edge of the park. Here you see on the slide here, the current conceptual plan as it stands. Two public workshops were held on November 4th and 16th at Grapevine Elementary School, which is adjacent to Bub Williamson Park. Approximately 45 people attended each workshop, where participants were asked, or provided with a brief history of the project oriented to the park, and provided an overview of the proposed improvements. They were then invited to provide feedback on the proposed improvements, and provide new ideas regarding the types of programming and/or design elements they might like to see incorporated into any future park improvement plans. Participants were also asked to rank proposed improvements in order of priority. A summary of the top design priorities are within your agenda packet on the screen, and are as follows, with one being the highest priority: upgraded restroom building, improved disabled pedestrian access, new site furnishings, new children's playground, new shade structure, picnic area, new open space turf area, new fenced off-leash dog park, and at eight, a new drought-tolerant landscaping and irrigation system. In addition to the above programming elements, some of the other more popular supported ideas include security enhancements, such as fencing and night lighting, walking trails, increased maintenance of trash receptacles, a full or half-size basketball court, and exercise equipment. For a full list of ideas and notes from the public workshop, please refer to Exhibits three and four in your agenda packet. Please note that with the removal of the soccer arena from the project, there will no longer be any active sports programming at the park unless the City Council chooses to introduce basketball, or a soccer field, or some other active sports programming. If basketball were to be introduced, it would need to be lighted in order to derive full value for programming by recreational leagues. Any programming elements introduced to activate the park would need to be lighted to fully achieve activation goals. Before we proceed with prioritization of the eight major programming elements, the public was asked to prioritize in the workshops. Staff seeks direction from the City Council on any additional major programming elements the City Council would like to incorporate into the project design. This would include elements, if any, the City Council would like to eliminate from the project scope. We will then rank any new ideas the City Council puts forth with the existing eight programming elements. And if the City Council would prefer, we could stop the presentation at this time and move to public comment, and then come back to prioritize the various programming components, if you like.
Does that sound, okay, and I have two speakers that I'll call up. But tonight, just so I understand correctly, tonight, we're not going to design the park, we're just going to put the important amenity, give a list of amenities, not in any order, but what are the important things that they want to see there, and then they're going to come back. Am I right?
That is correct. That's the direction we're looking for.
Okay. Okay, so that's our direction tonight. So, I'll start, I'll get my two speakers here. Scott Kinghorn.
Hi, thank you for having me here to talk about this tonight. We agree basically as a neighborhood, or peaceful neighborhood park, with mostly weekend activation and passive use. That's our goal with the park. We also would like to consider construction phases, with the top priorities being fences, and gates, and security, lighting, you know, those type of improvements should be first, so we can protect the, any future upgrades that go into the park. That's something we have a concern for. So, gates, walls, fences, currently, there's two homes that share chain-link fences on Huff Streets. That'd be the south Huff Street entrance, and those get very noisy. I think maybe some walls over on that end would improve noise to the homes, as well as provide security, and as well as provide some privacy for the neighbors, because people are looking in those all the time. I hear a dog barking all the time over there, because it looks into the park, and it barks all day. So, you know, that's an option, too, that we didn't bring up in the design phase, and so I'm just adding that in. Further, no pedestrian access on Huff Street. We fought this a long time ago, and City Council voted to have the Huff Street pedestrian access closed, because it just provides area, more areas for people to park, and then we get litter, and we get violent, you know, we get vandalism, trash, and all that stuff. So, and as far as the basketball, most people at the past meeting, as far as neighbors, disagreed with that. It brings in noise, it brings in, we don't want league, we don't want lights. That's what we fought for initially with some of this league process going on. We're more than willing to have pickup soccer games come in, you know. games come in, you know, activities, public events. More than willing to, you know, help endorse that. And, you know, I just thank you for having these design workshops and allowing us to give our opinion. And, you know, thanks.
Thank you. Kimberly Cross Purdy?
Good evening. Hi. First and foremost, we have been meeting since June about Bub Williamson Park. The most interesting part of this whole process has been us opening the doors of communication to figure out what is the most important aspect of this park, what we would like to see first. And we sat through two. Most of us in our groups sat through both workshops, and we listened intently to not only what we thought was important, but what the peppering of other neighbors from the community also thought was the most important. On a personal note, I want to mention that we have personally been fighting a heroin house on Grapevine Lane, which is the street that connects into Bub Williamson Park. It's the only way in and the only way out. We've also had a shutdown of a heroin house on Huff Street, which is the street that has the gated community, where we're trying not to open the gate into the park. So, we have a tremendous amount of security and safety issues that leading into the park before we even hit the park that we have concerns about. I have tried desperately to reach out and establish a neighborhood watch, and I've not met with any success. So, when we met on Sunday, we talked at great length, the few of us, and I got on the phone with several other people to discuss things. And the first priority for this park is the safety and security. That's what we want to look at. We don't want to talk about any of the other amenities, because without the safety and the security, the park and the surrounding neighborhood, none of the amenities matter. No one's going to want to bring their children down to the park to play in a tot lot. They're not going to do any of this stuff without that. So, what we're asking for is, because we've opened this door of communication, because we have this committed group of community members and neighbors willing to participate in the solution to the security and the issues on these streets, we ask that we first look at the phase, we do this in phases, because the more we talk, the more we really get to the heart of the park and what is really going to be in the best interest of everyone there. Dog park, tot lot, it doesn't matter at this point. We need to make it safe and secure. We don't have sidewalks going all the way into the park. We don't have a way to secure it all the way. I personally have made several phone calls between June and now to the Sheriff's Department, and several of them seem to have fallen on deaf ears. So, if we can't get anything secure on my street, how are we going to get the entrance in and out of Bub Williamson Park to be secure? So, that is what I'm asking for. I'm asking for us to look at that as the first phase of safety and security, looking at gating, some security lighting, of course, the ADA improvements, and some of the small things. And then if we could come back to the table and look at some of the other things that would just make an enhancement, that would be, I think, what would be in our best interest. So, when you're discussing it tonight amongst yourselves, I would really hope that you look at it that way. Let's focus on the safety and security first of this park, and then let's bring in the other amenity pieces, please.
When you're saying about the security, I have a que... You know, are you...
Of course.
I mean, we can do lighting, but one of the problems with a passive park is that issue. And we had, I've had calls before from people in your neighborhood, and we sent the sheriffs over there, but, you know, we don't have anybody that is permanently there, and we can't have that. So, I don't know how to take...
And I...
That's why we wanted it to be an active park, because then when there's people there and doing things, it drives out the bad element.
Right now, because we've been opening the door of this communication, because we've kind of let our neighbors know about the park through this discussion about the soccer arena, we've actually seen increased number of traffic of people with their dogs going down to the park. And so, we've gotten a few more reports. We are getting more people into the park, but it's not families. It's people who want to walk their dogs. It's people that maybe go down there, ride their bike. We've got our pickup soccer games on Sunday. It's also regular, normal, everyday neighborhood noise that's attending, going down to the park right now. So, the security aspect of it would be, I know we don't want lights down there, like major lights, but we would like something that maybe would be a deterrent going into the park after hours, a larger gate of some kind, those kinds of things. And again, it's, we don't have all the answers. I mean, we're discussing amongst ourselves, trying to figure out what would work and what we wouldn't. And fascinating part of all of this is, the more we discuss it as neighbors and entering into these two workshops, the more we're really getting to the heart of what it is we need down there and what's going to really work. If we rush into activating this park before we have the big picture, which is all this communication, we're going to put stuff down there that's not going to get used or not going to get utilized.
What did you, did you guys talk? I was out of town on your workshops, so I couldn't get there.
Right.
Did you talk about the security issues at the workshops?
We did. We did. But just speaking on the way I looked at both workshops, because the first workshop, I sat there, and I was very quiet. I didn't offer up any opinions. And I just listened to what was brought up. And some of it was about, let's talk about what's already been put on the table. So, we're all spinning our wheels about the dog park and the children's area, and this, that, and the other thing. And we were encouraged to bring pictures and try to look at what would work. But then, as we continue to talk and chip away at this, we realize that the issue is the safety and the security of the park in general. And if we could just get our... And we don't want to bring outsiders into this park, because that's going to cause more issues.
Well, it's a public park, though.
It is. But what I'm saying is, as neighbors, we're self-regulating. We know who's going down in the park. We're talking to our neighbors more. We're getting more involved. We're making more phone calls to the Sheriff's Department and just letting them know what we're witnessing and what we're dealing with. And that's what we should be looking at. You know, we're paying attention to what's going on at South Guena Vista with their dog park, and we're concerned about how many people are coming in and the issues they are having. This is one way into this park and one way out. And that burden is on the people like myself that live on this street. I, myself, was on the phone with the Sheriff's Office on Thanksgiving, and my phone call went like this, "Hey, it's Kim Purdy again. Happy Thanksgiving. Guess what's going on?" And then I had to ask for people, "Come on." So, all our conversations keeps going back to the same principles. We have to figure out how to make the park safer. And it seems as if the neighbors are committed to doing that and bringing that in. And so, I'm just asking for more communication.
Okay.
Maybe another workshop, maybe pushing some of these bigger pieces further out.
Okay.
And do it in phases.
Okay. Okay. Well, we could, we'll talk about that, but thank you for giving your input.
Thank you. I'm so sorry. I just needed three minutes.
It's okay. It's okay. I was asking you a question, so it was okay. Ken, is it, Ken, is it Loat?
I have nothing prepared, but I'm just kind to back up what Kim said.
You don't have to be prepared. Just tell us what you think.
Well, basically, you know, the security was brought up, but it was not an issue for the workshop. It was like, let's show that and go through the workshop and get our rankings in. And, you know, outside of what Kim was saying, you know, one and two are very important. One and two could be the first phase, along with security. The security is how the place is either locked up or not locked up, how it's patrolled, you know, lighting or no lighting, the amount of lighting, the type of lighting, simple things like there's kids with ATVs who go and do donuts up on the lawn, on the grass, on the turf. So, you know, maybe bollards, you know, there's lots of solutions, you know, for security. Also, you know, posted hours, you know, stronger posted hours, hours on the restrooms themselves. You know, that's the main problem. I hear from Scott Moore, because he can see the park. I can only hear it. But, you know, people are coming and using the drinking fountains to bathe. They're bathing in the creek. You know, we said that the creek was not part of this park, but it is.
It is.
It is part of the park, and not addressing and ignoring it is not going to help this park get used. You know, we talked to, I know it's not high on the priority, but again, with the people who live around the park, it's a place to go exercise. You can walk around the park. A trail around the park wouldn't be bad. You know, right now, there's one that is kind of there and kind of used, but, you know, and then incorporating the trail, and then incorporating that area that we're calling the dog park for now, but just, that's just fenced off nothing right now. It's, you know, just because of the terrain. But getting back to the security, it's back to hours, you know, know that the restrooms are locked. You can't use them. And know that there's some kind of mechanism to keep people from urinating and bathing everywhere, you know?
They have that problem in other parks, too, for homeless issues.
Oh, I know that. I know that. I mean, you know...
And when nobody, if it's a passive park and there's nobody there, then that's what happens. So, which is why we want to make it more active.
But even if it was an active park, it's still going to be shut down. There's going to be hours when it's not open.
Definitely, yeah.
And that's when the security comes in. Even though what we're proposing is to keep it closed longer because of the, you know, not wanting any activity after dark, really, you know, I don't know. I think we need a security workshop. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, sir. That's the end of our speakers. So, Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually have a question, of course, for you. I don't know if it's Ally or Tony. On Exhibit Three in our Agenda Packet, it has the park amenities, rating results, and additional community comments. On the top one, where we have ranked one through eight, you have scoring on here. So, the upgraded restroom building was scored at 184. It is ranked number one. So, I went back through, I read it a couple of times, but I didn't quite understand how you ranked these 184 to 254. Could you go over that for us, please?
Sure. So, the participants are asked to rank the highest priority being one, all the way down to 10, being the lowest. So, those items that received actually the fewest number of votes have the highest priority. So, that's where you see the number of votes, 184 being the lowest. That's number one. All the way down to number eight at 254.
Okay. And then, the other ones didn't make the top eight, but had quite a few people in support of these, well, except for the ones that only had the one person supporting them. So, these are just the continuation of the list of eight?
Correct. So, we listed the eight as individual line items to be ranked. And then, the ones that you see listed under additional community comments, those were comments that participants submitted separately. And then, we just tallied up how many of those comments we received as a whole from both workshops.
Okay. Thank you for doing this. And I want to say thank you to everybody in the Bub Williamson neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods who participated in the two workshops and who have attended a lot of community meetings with the neighbors of Bub Williamson Park, both at the workshops and outside of the workshops. There's been a lot of discussion on this park, and I really appreciate everybody being here and everybody being engaged in this process and letting us hear what your concerns are and what your vision is for the park. So, thank you for doing that, and a thank you to staff for also putting that together for us. So, I guess what we're looking at is identifying some of the amenities. That's what you're asking for at this point from us.
Correct. So, we're going to go to another slide that has those same eight amenities that we had up there before. So, that is the public ranking on the left-hand side, the name of the design element. And then, what we would ask of council is to go ahead and let us know whether each of these is either a high priority or a low priority going forward for the project design.
In addition, if there's anything on this list that the council majority wants to add or remove, and then again, as we're going through the next round of trying to get construction bids, knowing your priorities on the items you agree on will help us if we need to value-engineer the project to meet budget.
Okay. And then, for a couple of the things that are important to some people to have in here, which would be the adult activity equipment or the senior activity equipment, the trail, the, some of the, you were at the meeting as well, where we talked about having every so often something else, some type of fitness equipment to be done. And then also the sensory garden that we talked about at the meeting. Do we still have somebody on staff writing grants that we could look at getting grants if we had to do this in phases to put those into future development as we approach or apply for grant monies for those programs or for those parts of the park?
The city does have a grants writer, and we pursue anything that we can, especially we did, we weren't successful on its moot because it was soccer-related, but anything that can help us to enhance or add to our amenities. So, assuming it's an item that could be, that isn't a part of the overall design and could be put in at a separate time, then we could pursue funding for things if they were on the lower end.
Okay. So, I guess I'll go first, since I'm here. Obviously, number one, the bathrooms, the restrooms have to be upgraded to ADA standards. So, that's a given. And the improved disabled pedestrian access also is a given and needs to be done. But as we're talking about improving pedestrian access within the park and around the park, I would also like to see us incorporate the trail around the park, so that we have a continuous walking trail or a walking program for people. So, I'd like to see that incorporated, perhaps with number two. And I see that's down on the second, on our Agenda Report. It's in the second half of this slide. And of course, the site furnishings, the tables, the benches, those kind of things have been asked for, although still debating about what style that that wants to take on for the community. I know at one of the town hall meetings, it was talked about having a theme for the park. And that went over really well with some people and not so much with other people. And then, the people that really liked the idea of having a theme had different themes in mind. So, that's something, perhaps, we still have to get down into the weeds on that about at a future time. Is, do you see it that way as well?
Absolutely. So, these are really just, you know, taking the major design components and ranking those at this time. And then, we'll go ahead, and, you know, we plan on having an additional workshop to go back to the public and talk about a conceptual design after tonight's meeting. And at that time, you know, we'll get into more of those specifics, including, you know, the sensory playground and the children's area and those types of things.
Okay. Of the top eight, I think they all deserve to be there, except number seven. I'm not convinced about a dog park there yet. We still have some issues in other parks to deal with and work out as far as the dog park goes. And what we've learned from off-leash dog parks is that that would become a destination for people. And I know that once, this map had gone up on the website and it showed a dog park, people from outside of Vista were showing up thinking there was an off-leash dog park there. And I know I got a couple of emails from people wanting to know what happened to our off-leash dog park, and it's like, "We don't have one here." So, I would be very hesitant to start off with a dog park on any level at this park to begin with. So, that's not on my list. As far as other things that I would like to see and have it from the get-go be part of the design discussion would be murals and art. And I know that we've talked a lot about art in the city, and we've talked about getting art. That's a big thing for me, getting art, not just in downtown, but out throughout the city. And I've talked a lot over the years about getting art in our parks, and I think this would be a great place to put art. It can be any medium. Doesn't have to be a mural. Doesn't have to be a sculpture. But, I mean, I think we should be open to whatever medium of art we have. But I do know that, I believe it was Sarah Spinks had talked, is Sarah here? I see her in the back. She had already talked with the community and offered up her services to do a mural at the park. So, I'd like to take that and move that up, so that we can talk about art in the park and be open to whatever format that takes, so we can have that discussion. And if I may, I do want to ask the neighbors a question about the basketball court, because we've had a lot of people ask about a basketball court, but only a half-court, not a full court, just a half-court for people to go shoot hoops, you know, with their kids, play horse. I used to love beating my brothers at horse. Is that, well, let you know, we've had other people want it on their list, so we can play with that or not. But also, down farther, I don't know about the water fountain. A lot of people have commented they wouldn't use a public drinking fountain, but they wanted a drinking fountain for dogs. Even if we don't have a dog park, people do still go walk their dogs through there. So, I don't know how you would do that if you don't have a drinking fountain for humans, if you'd have one for the dogs. But I definitely think the top eight, less the dog park, and then adding the artwork, is definitely something that we should talk about. definitely something that we should talk about in the beginning. So, those are the things that I would start with on my list, and then, we can talk about the theme for the playground and the rest of it. So, thank you.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a question about the scoring as well. It was mostly answered, I think, at this point, but so, you have on the second section there, under the additional community comments and ideas, the number of people listed, and for security concerns, and we heard some concerns this evening about security, so a number of people that responded were 14. Is that right?
Correct.
So, to have an idea of what we're looking at here, how many people would have responded with the new drought-tolerant landscaping and irrigation system to get that score of 254?
I don't know. I could ask our consultant who's here tonight, Andrew Reese. He may have that answer if you'd like.
Yeah. I'd like to know, because I'd like to know where that ranks versus, you know, well, all of them. I mean, if you just could give us an idea of number 1, number 8, just so we know how those, how security fell to 9.
Hello?
Hi. Good evening. My name is Andrew Reese. I'm a landscape architect and the consultant on the project, so if you could ask the question again, I was a little bit...
Well, yeah, so, the question is, for security concerns, there was 14 people over the two workshops that were concerned about that, and I'm not, I don't, you know, security, I think is, in my opinion, is already assumed. That's something we're going to look at.
Correct.
So, I think a lot of people probably already assumed, and that's why only 14 people responded to it. My question is, how many people responded to the new drought-tolerant landscaping and irrigation system and generated that score of 254?
So, just to clear this up for you guys, we asked the community to rank or rate the known 8 items, and we gave them a scale of 1 to 8 and 1 to 10. They could write in some other ones. So, everybody who basically turned in a form, 27 people voted on these top. So, for the new drought-tolerant, about 27 people from the both workshops gathered it. Out of those 27 people, 14, and basically a half, decided to write in by hand that security was their number-one concern. So, we really have 2 categories of data. We have the original ranking of the 8, and then, we have the additional data that we pulled in from the community. And the way we've organized this is that those, the ones that kind of rose to the top were the ones where all the people, you know, wrote in what they felt was the most important, and so, out of that 27, the 14 wrote in by hand, security of some form, which is overwhelmingly, you know, as your consultant telling you, was the number-one concern from the workshop that was a write-in.
Well, that's very helpful. So, I mean, that makes a big difference in how I look at these rankings moving forward.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
That's it. So, I mean, I think the 8 amenities are all good. I mean, I think these are, I mean, we have completely transformed this park to a completely different project, and I think, looking at the security concerns that people do have and have mentioned this evening, and that's obviously a number-one concern if that's what people wrote in, and I think that's council's concern as well. I think having some activity is important, and I know that people don't want to have people from Carlsbad or Oceanside, whatever, coming to Vista, but, you know, when I heard that people were coming from Carlsbad to Vista, that tells me we're doing a good thing. That means we're making our park attractive and making our amenities attractive, something that maybe other cities don't have, and I think it's a positive thing. I mean, I'm not looking to build a park for other cities, but that means that our park is a fabulous park, and I think that people are using it. So, I think having activity in this park is going to get rid of some of the problems that we have. We're not going to solve every problem by activating a park. We have other parks that are active and still have problems, but that will discourage some of the things that are happening during the day, some of the things that I've witnessed myself, when the park is empty and, you know, there's 1 or 2 cars in the parking lot, and you know that's not legal activity that's happening in those vehicles. So, my preference would be to take a look at the top 8, the 8 things that were recommended. Obviously, security would be a concern of ours, that needs to be a priority, and I think the walking trails, again, getting people walking around the park, activating the park, is going to help in discouraging people hanging out in that park. Now, one of the things that I don't see here, I'm sure it's here, but someone had mentioned about moving, and I think we're already planning on moving the gazebo. I think some gentleman brought up the idea that, hey, where it's located right now is not a good place, because, again, people are hanging out there, they're kind of out of view, and moving that gazebo more forward towards the parking lot so that it's more visible?
That's correct. The existing wooden gazebo would be demolished and then moved closer to the entrance of the park near the restroom area.
Okay.
It would be a new structure with a concrete pad and...
I think that would be, yeah, definitely a positive. So, and then, I mean, if the Art Commission, or I think it was Sarah, if she's willing to volunteer, was that what I heard? Art mural, that'd be great. But anyways, however that's going to work out, I mean, I think having art and a mural at the park would be important. I think that helps in the graffiti area, and most tagging artists, if I can call them that, generally respect murals, and I think that's done well for us throughout the city. So, I would definitely support that as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Franklin?
I appreciate, Councilman Aguilera made my point about the gazebo. We're going to get rid of that, right, and then replace it with the covered structure. And I wanted to agree with Councilwoman Rigby about the need to bring art in to attract the right element and create a respect and appreciation for the park. And I wanted to make sure that we addressed the concern that we heard several times at the workshop about replacing the gate that prohibited vehicle access to our maintenance road that was allowing people to come in and dump. And then, I have to agree about this idea of displacing, if you have nothing going on, you don't have good people there. We can't post a sheriff's deputy there 24/7, so we've got to have some good citizens there, and a number of them using the park to displace the bad guys. It's the only way, long-term, we solve that problem. So, we need to think and really get a consensus on what we can do to activate the park, because we've got to bring good guys in if we want the bad guys out, and we all want the bad guys out. So, that's, I think, very important. So, that's all I've got. I appreciate the staff working really hard with the community to really produce a result that the community's happy about and has an investment in. Thank you.
Councilman Rigby, did you have something to add?
Yes, ma'am, I do. I just wanted to respond to Kimberly's comment about the neighborhood watch. It's relevant on a different level here, and I think Captain Cinemo is in the back. I just want to ask Captain Cinemo, at some point this evening before Kimberly leaves, if you could speak with her. We've tried many times to get the neighborhood watch director officer out here to have a conversation with this neighborhood, to start the neighborhood watch, and that has not gone well. We haven't had any luck getting anybody out there to talk to them about that. So, if we can get somebody from the Sheriff's Department to have a conversation this evening before she leaves the building, I would very, very much appreciate that. So, I just wanted to put that out there.
Councilwoman, Captain Cinemo is not with us tonight.
Oh, well, sometimes he sits around the corner, and I can't see that chair.
Sometimes, but he's not here tonight, but we'll make sure that Ms. Purdy-Cross gets a call tomorrow from the Sheriff's Department to at least have the dialogue on the meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Green.
All right. So, in looking at your current conceptual plan, as given to me in the Agenda Package with these 8 items, I like the 8 items that are listed in there. I as well think that the new fenced off-leash dog park will attract people to come to the park and activate the park. I feel like we definitely made a, you know, we got a lot of community input, we got rid of the soccer stadium that was annoying and going to be all lit up and loud at night and all that, but, you know, there's a lot of other parks that have other things that people can go to, you know, with baseball fields and basketball courts and stuff like that, and there aren't a lot of other, you know, off-leash dog parks in our area, and there is a high demand for that type of park, and I think that is exactly what will activate this park personally. So, for me, that is a high priority for this park. The other items that are on there are obviously high priorities as well, upgrading the restrooms, improving the disabled pedestrian access, and then, looking at the scoring of items 5, 6, 7, and 8, they were all really close. So, the dog park scored just as well as the open space turf arena. I mean, it was within a couple of points. So, if I got to get rid of the dog park, I'm going to get rid of the turf too. I mean, we got to do something or we got to do nothing, and I feel like throwing that dog park in there in addition to all these other amenities is exactly what this park needs, and as a homeowner in Vista, I welcome the city improving parks in the area. I think it's great for our property values, and I think it's great for our community. So, all of these would be a high priority. The highest priority of all of these, though, as stated by my other councilmembers, is security. We don't want to put stuff in here that's going to get ruined immediately. We don't want, you know, Sarah to produce an amazing mural, which I know she will, she's awesome like that, and have somebody come in and wreck it because our parks aren't secure. I know that when our other parks are closed up, it's, they're hard to get in, they're hard to access from a car standpoint. I don't know exactly what goes on with this particular park from a security standpoint, but the more we can do to secure it, the better, because it is going to be a highly-desirable place to show up with wonderful amenities when we're all done with it. So, that's where I'm at with it. Thank you so much.
Mayor, if I might add, and for Councilwoman Rigby, we do have Lieutenant Mike Muncie, who is in the back, and if, Kimberly, if you could talk to Mike afterwards, we'd be happy to do it. Thanks.
Okay, and I actually agree with all of you on the first 8 things. I agree on the art. I think it'd be nice to have some piece of art there in addition to the mural that we're going to have, and, but I think security, going down to the additional comments, security, you know, lighting or fencing, the one person mentioned about the fence by, or I made a note here somewhere, by, is it by Huff Lane? By Huff Street, yeah. Yeah, you know, he measured walls or something where there's a fence, maybe that would be something, and no pedestrian access, maybe if they want to keep it safer, they would just put the access from the one area. I took notes on that. It says here, "Security gate at Huff," also no access. I think that maybe that would be an important thing, and walking trails are important also. So, those are, so I agree on pretty much everything that the council agrees with, but security is number 1. Oh, and we have one more person here that wants to speak, Virginia Green.
Good evening, and thank you so much for the effort that you guys have put in on helping to revive this park. I thank Tony Winnie for his patience with our activism, and what I would like to ask is that in a different budget, a sidewalk budget, I know it's not part of the park, but right now, there's no, the last 35 to 50 feet coming into the park, there's no sidewalk. This ties in with item number 2, disability. If you're in a wheelchair or you're compromised, you literally have to go into the street to get into the park, and I know it's a separate topic, a separate budget, but if that could become something partnered with this overall improvement, then it really would be an attractive park for more than just Vista's. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that, I guess that includes all of our...
Mayor, if we could just make sure we're all summed up on the same page.
Right.
We're seeing a majority agreeing that all 8 are items we'd like to see in the park, and in addition to the 8 on the screen, prioritization on security, which goes hand-in-hand with a number of these upgrades, and again, any, all the experts in crime prevention through environmental design will tell you that you can't just make a bigger, build a bigger fence, you have to get people there, make it less attractive for people who shouldn't be there, make it more uncomfortable for people who shouldn't be there, because you aren't, you can't hide behind things. So, that's something that will be absolutely incorporated into the park. So, the security, a walking trail, and then, a focus on art. I know that that wasn't unanimous for all 8, but that's what I heard from the majority, and so, I just wanted to make sure we all see that.
Councilman Rigby, and I have one other speaker here.
Okay. In addition to that, I had also asked for the exercise equipment or the fitness stops along the walking trails, so I didn't hear that recapped.
And we didn't hear it from any of the others. Would anyone else like that to be included on the priority list?
I think we did hear about that from some of the residents that came to ask for it.
We did.
No, I know we heard it from, I'm sorry, I'll clarify. I didn't hear it when you guys were clarifying your priorities, I didn't hear it from anyone besides Councilwoman Rigby.
I was asking a roundabout question, which is to say, I can't remember how many folks, do you remember how many folks had said that was important? Did you feel that...
I wasn't counting, it was a discussion.
It's 4. It was 4 on the ranking list in Exhibit 3.
Oh, so, we had more than 4 people talk about it. They just, I guess, didn't put a paper in.
Well, I certainly would join in the idea of including it in some way. I don't know how many different pieces of equipment we'd include, but if there was a way to include some quantity of it...
Well, I think that's important, to do some of those things, and that's something that's been a trend in some of the parks in other cities, and that's another way to activate this park, and to have these little fitness stops or to have adult equipment that they can use. I know some of the discussion at the town hall meeting was put it by the playground, and that would be great for some of the moms who want to watch their kids, but not great for people who don't have kids and don't want to be near the screaming kids on the playground, but still want to walk the trails and use the fitness pieces. But that's another way to activate this park, I think, and so, that was a conversation we did have.
I mean, I would say if there's some pieces of equipment that are well-thought-out, might entice folks to come use them daily as part of their exercise routine, and if that draws more regular use to the park...
Absolutely. We can be very innovative.
I can support it.
We've got 3, we're good.
Okay. So, I'm all for being innovative, creative, and torchbearers for our city park here.
Yeah, but I don't want just pull-ups.
Pardon me?
Every 100 feet, a pull-up bar. Thank you.
A bar for pull-ups.
Every 100 feet, a pull-up bar, yeah?
Well, we need, you know, there's a lot more modern equipment out there in today's world, so let's incorporate that.
And can I just verify that we're talking about incorporating this on the repaired walkway that's around the park? We're not necessarily saying, hey, we want to have walking trails in the habitat or anything that's going to be extensive amounts of money for us, correct? This is saying the walkway?
Right.
Trail? It's already on the conception?
Yeah, the walkway trail that would be added to the priority list, and then, looking at some circuit elements.
Okay.
And dispersed throughout it.
Right.
No Jim. Circuit, yeah. Okay, I have 2 more speakers, you guys want to try, and then, I have a speaker. Yeah, I take the speaker. Christine Lowe? You have 3 minutes. We missed something?
Your consideration. I'm for promoting multi-use for the park, and I believe that people can get exercise with their dogs on the leash, walking around a trail where all of those amenities are present. I think one thing that isn't really being considered right now is the riparian area that's next to the park. There's a lot of predators in there. I'm not sure, if you're not paying really close attention to your animal, that they are not going to be attacked, and it's gotten worse since the fire because the habitat in those other areas has been interrupted, and so, there are many more animals in that riparian area than there were before. I just think it's that a fenced-off dog park where people kind of let their animal go, I'm not sure you can guarantee their safety. The other thing is, I, you know, I think the neighbors are very concerned about what happens after hours in the park. The last time that we attended a park meeting, it was dusk, the gate was not yet closed, and the gate's kind of a joke anyway, and there were people literally waiting until the gate closed so they could go in and do their dope deals in the bathroom or whatever else that they were doing, and this is after the close park, because it, all it is is a chain, and I believe that the park person who comes and closes... And I believe that the park person who comes and closes it is probably somewhat intimidated, doesn't, not wanna take an aggressive stance about any of what goes on after hours there, and it's completely dark, so they can do whatever they want. As well as Grapevine Lane doesn't have a very maintained presence going into the park, and I think that reads towards the crime, too. No sidewalks, not enough lighting on that street. It doesn't look like it's maintained or policed by the city in the way that it should. Anyway, that's all I have to say, and thank you so much for everything that you've done for us.
Thank you, yeah. Maybe the, maybe the chain needs turning to something different as, as part of the security concerns.
Be included in the security issue.
And then also, I'd say lock the bathroom when you chain the fence.
The bathrooms are locked when the park director comes around to lock up the gates. We have one park director who locks up all the city parks.
Gates and bathrooms, okay. Okay. Okay, so back to Deputy Mayor. Did you have...
No.
No, you're done, okay. Councilmember Green.
We're good.
We're good. Okay, we're all good, and so do you have enough information from all of us?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, based on your feedback, we will go ahead and, um, hold another workshop with the public.
Okay.
And, uh, present them with a conceptual design or two, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
That sounds good. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Um, so we're gonna move on to our next item. Our next discussion item is our Time Machine Sculpture in Downtown Vista D2 Recreation. Darren, is Darren back?
Mayor, uh...
I was gonna do it.
Recreation and Community Services Director, Theron Dykman, isn't available tonight, so I'm going to be up here with management analyst, Amel Duerta, and Ms. Duerta will be presenting the staff report.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Amel Duerta. I am the Management Analyst with Recreation and Community Services. Tonight, I will be presenting a report on the Time Machine Sculpture. In June, a public art proposal for an alley art festival sculpture was submitted to the Recreation and Community Services Department. Public notice was posted from June tenth to July ninth, and no comments are received. The sculpture titled Time Machine is by Randall Art Ranch, Rick Randall and Jaden Sterling Randall, and was proposed to be installed in front of the Edward Jones Investment Business at 236 East Broadway at the intersection with South Indiana Avenue in the landscape planner area, in the approximate location where the red star is noted on the above slide. The sculpture was approved by the Public Arts Commission on June thirteenth and approved for a ninety-day display period on August twenty-second by the City Council. The City Council directed staff to obtain feedback from surrounding businesses and property owners, and requested the item be discussed after the ninety-day period to determine if the artwork will remain in the location for an extended period. Staff visited businesses and/or spoke with property owners in the area of East Broadway and South Indiana Avenue in August and September. Staff revisited the businesses and made contact in November and followed up with property owners. On the screen is a list of the nineteen businesses that gave feedback on the sculpture, and nine property owners as well. During those contacts, staff received the following feedback: Businesses approving keeping the Time Machine in the current location were twelve; Property owners approving were six; Businesses requesting removal were two; One requested a different sculpture; One requested return to existing landscape; Property owners requesting removal were two; Both requested replacement with a different sculpture; Businesses who are neutral on the subject are four; Neutral property owners is one; One business was undecided. Staff also received a letter of support in keeping the Time Machine from the Vista Chamber of Commerce. Aside from the Time Machine Sculpture, the city has other artwork in the downtown area. Currently, there are ten kites. Staff typically removes approximately six kites per year and replaces them with what, with new ones during the months of April and May. Freedom Struggle, a May Day, and a Flock of Kites on these slides are on permanent exhibition. In addition, there are eight sculptures in downtown Vista: Bloom in Time, Alley Art Man, Alley Cat, Prima Vista, and the Veterans Memorial are, are on permanent display. Lastly, there are fourteen murals in the area. This slide shows nine murals, however, please note number thirteen, that mural is no longer there, it has been painted over with a beige color. And here are the remaining six murals in downtown Vista. This concludes my presentation. At this time, staff is requesting City Council direction regarding the display of the Time Machine Sculpture. I am available to answer any questions, and the artists are also present at this meeting.
And I have five speakers. Shall we go with the speakers first? Okay, first, Jaden Sterling Randall. And shall we follow by Kathleen Boyle? And Rick Randall.
Hi, I'm Jaden Sterling Randall, this is Rick Randall, we're Randall Art Ranch. Uh, I don't really have anything specifically to say, because we spoke in August when it came up before in City Council. I did give Kathy Valdez a sign, uh, a paper petition with three hundred and twenty-five signatures on it. There's also an online petition that has two hundred and fifteen signatures on it, which is a total of five hundred and forty signatures in favor of the sculpture. So that is basically all I had to say.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Kathleen Boyle, followed by Brett Shasenbaum.
Hi, good evening. Um, I like to see that the default, if the, um, Time Machine gets taken out, is another sculpture, so that would be okay. But I think the Time Machine has been, um, a charming and quirky part of Vista. I know a friend of mine from the Bay Area came down, she's my age, and she spent quite a while, um, playing with the Time Machine, but I've also seen little kids playing with it, and it, I think it adds a lot to our town. I think all the art in our town has made Vista so much better. But I think there's something about the Time Machine, I think because you're putting in a date, and it gets very existential for people, like, what date? Do I wanna go back to the year I was born, when I graduated from college, the best year of my life? So people start really thinking about their lives as they're in that quirky sculpture. So, um, art in the parks, art in Vista, art in the townsite area, yes? Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see Brett Shasenbaum, did he go home?
He didn't ask ball practice.
Ball practice, okay. How about Jeffrey Frankel? And here we follow by Sarah Spinks.
As the VVVA Director, I wanna speak that my office is directly across the street from where the Time Machine is. We also have the Little Busy Bodies Preschool directly adjacent to where our office is. Their gymnasium is interior, it's across the street that, from our office. They walk the kids daily to stretch, do their exercises, go to gym, have free play. It has become a place where they go to. They take an extra five minutes on their walk across the street to stop at the Time Machine, to play, to hang out, to be kids. Uh, we already heard that even adults come and enjoy reliving their various years. Uh, I would be in favor of seeing it remain on. I will share that the VVVA has located a private donor. I approached the Vista Art Foundation that we should have a brochure of all the art that we saw within this, uh, report, that we should be able to decide, and what did the, what do, speak with the artist, what are the origins of the piece of art, when was it installed, what it means to Vista, how it came to fruition. I would love to have the Time Machine be part of that brochure. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Sarah Spinks, followed by Kelly Moncur.
Good evening. Um, I just wanna speak in favor of the Time Machine being there. I work and live downtown, and there's not a day that I don't see people playing on this of all ages. I think that we need more art. I feel like we could just, there's all kinds of opportunities for art. I think about the economic, um, impact that art has on our downtown. I've lived here my whole life, and now I have all kinds of things to show people who come and visit me from all over the world. And they're like, wow, your little downtown is so cute, and look at all this art. And I'm like, yeah, we need more. Let's keep giving more, 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 so, um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Moncur, followed by Alexis, oh, Pencher, Pencher.
Good evening. Nope, I've never been up here, I got a little...
Oh.
Good evening, how are you?
A new experience.
I know. Um, I wanted to speak in favor of the alley art, um, of the, uh, Time Machine. Um, that's something that the high schoolers really appreciate, specifically sculptures, that's something that, when I first became part of the Art Commission, they all said, "More sculptures, please," and they love that it's interactive. I also wanted to speak about, I had a friend of mine come from Washington DC, she's an independent curator, as well as works for the Smithsonian Museum in Washington DC, and she was completely blown away by the artwork that's here in downtown Vista, and she actually just curated, um, a big show on steampunk, and she was like, "If I had known that this was in there, I would've totally had it be a part of it." So I think it's such a wonderful thing that we have something like this in our downtown, and a really great, um, kind of boon to us as a city that we have such great art, so in favor. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll let you, I'll let you say your last name. So I don't murder it.
It's Paul Chev.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, so I'm here to speak in favor of the, uh, Time Machine Sculpture. I see it every single day. I see, like, everybody else's kids playing it on it, interacting with it every single day. Um, I've FaceTimed with my dad in Texas and been like, "Dad, look at how cool this is." And he's like, "Oh, my God, you know, we gotta check that out when I come visit," and, I mean, it's one person, but it's, it's cool. It's really cool, and if you see, like, the interactions that people have on Facebook with it, or other social media with it, just people taking pictures of all ages, you know, from Kathleen's friend, a little bit older, to young little kids. It speaks to everybody, especially on the art platform, and I think it's just something really cool, and if it would, if it leaves, it would be a really shame. It would be a shame, there'd be a lot of people who would miss it, and I think that, um, I think it needs to stay, so.
Thank you. I just like to, that's all of our speakers, but I, there's, I have one other speaker that didn't wanna speak, so I, but in support of it. I just would like to thank the Randalls for the, 'cause you've made a difference in our downtown. You do great artwork, and we appreciate you and all of your artwork that you have, all different kinds of artwork down there, so, anyway, you've made a difference in our downtown, and we appreciate it, so I will go to Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I, too, would like to, uh, thank the Randalls for their contributions to our community and our art community for all their contributions. Um, it's great to hear, uh, what, uh, Kelly had to say about, uh, you know, the art actually being recognized by other people and all these stories, you know, I mean, our downtown is, is really neat, and, uh, really proud of it, and I love to take people down there, especially people that haven't been here in twenty, thirty years, and they are blown away. So, and a big part of that is the art that's there, they, they can't believe how much we have, so I think this is all positive. My only question, and it's just to clarify, um, has to do with the feedback summary. Am I to assume the businesses approving the Time Machine, twelve; property owners approving six? Those are all separate people, right? So that would be eighteen?
There were four, uh, property owners that were also the business owners.
Okay, so where, are they double counted, or...
So, um, let me go back.
And would they be double counted on the, the negative, too?
So, e, if the, a property owner was also a business owner, they got one count for the business and one count for the property. And there was one property owner, if you go to, um, let me go...
I'm only aware of one property owner personally that is against it. I wasn't aware of the number you have here.
Yes, there's two.
Okay, there's two.
There is two.
That's about right, yeah.
Yeah, and both of those are, um, the business owners as well.
Yeah, so it's two.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, well, uh, given that, and from what I've observed, uh, from the different events in our downtown, and all the activity, I think this is a positive, uh, contribution to our downtown, so I will definitely be supporting it. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My, my understanding, and I don't, I didn't tag it in my book, so I can't find it right away, um, it's in front of Edward Jones Investments at 236 East Broadway, and my understanding is that that is one of the businesses that does not want it there any longer. Have they said what their objection is? If there was anything more than just that, I would like to know.
Um, I believe after the last visit I had with them, they prefer it to remain landscaping. Um, if the person I spoke to believes the Time Machine would be better in a playground area, um, however, yes, that was their comment.
Okay, I, I was, wasn't sure if they had a specific reason that they didn't want it in front of their location, if it was disrupting their business. I can only imagine with kids climbing on it all day long, it would probably be a little bit of a, a distraction.
Can I offer real quick feedback, uh, from talking to them? They were initially concerned that their place might get vandalized because it's right in front of them, and they knew it would be very interactive, and that people at night, perhaps after drinking or whatever, um, might vandalize their place. So that's their biggest concern, I think, and I, I think that's still a concern of theirs moving forward, um, this, you know.
Well, I, I think that Edward Jones has been there, they're a longtime, um, business and community partner, and I, I wa, I don't easily dismiss their concerns regarding having this at that location in front of their business. So I don't know if there's anybody here from Edward Jones who wanted to speak to that. I don't, I think, I don't think so. So I just wanted to ask that question. Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
All right. Thank you again, Randalls, for your contributions to our downtown. We have the coolest downtown in the entire nation, in my opinion, so everybody should come check it out, and a lot of it is thanks to you, so keep that up. I am a fan of the Time Machine. Um, I also am not dismissing, uh, Mr. Peterson's concerns by any means. I would think if it was a big disruption to his business and their day-to-day operations, I would hope they would have somebody here to speak against it. Um, the sheer number of, uh, you know, signatures that you guys have, uh, been able to get is impressive, five hundred signatures, pretty cool, uh, for, for a public art piece. Um, my biggest concern with this, and mind you, I, I do like it, I think that it's cool, I think, uh, you know, we can sit there, I sat there and put the, my date of birth in there, I wanted to go back to nineteen seventy-eight and see if my dad was really at the hospital, 'cause I'm not really sure. But the one thing that I had is in looking at your public arts proposal form, it said "No maintenance required, maybe an annual spray-down with WD-40." Um, and I have visited, um, the Time Machine several times because I knew we were gonna have this meeting, um, and I was aware of the vandalism issues and kind of everybody's issues, so I wanted to see, you know, for myself, kinda what the deal is there. Um, I found that it does require a little bit more maintenance than a little just WD-40 once a year. Um, there are, you know, lots of leaves that blow around there, lots of dirt, uh, you know, birds, can't really control them, I get that. Um, so what I kinda ask for the art community is, I do feel like this is something that should stay down there, but I'd kinda like to put it on, on us, who are seeing it regularly when we're down there, you know, wipe it up, make it to where if somebody comes from out of town, they'll want to sit inside that Time Machine. 'Cause I've walked by it a couple times and thought, "There's no way I'm gonna sit inside it," just because of the, you know, the, the dirt. I mean, I, I was in a suit, mind you, so I didn't wanna get the suit dirty. Um, but that's a concern that I have, is maintenance. So if we could just kinda keep our eye on that, and then be vigilant. If we see people screwing around, around Edward Jones, Mr. Peterson's a fantastic member of our community, you know, get him out of there, you know, let's be active citizens, and let's be proud of what we have downtown. Um, so, you know, my decision is that we remain, that it remains there, um, and that, uh, as a community, we try to maintain it just a little better so that every time we walk by it is a shining example of art in our community. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you. That, that was always my concern, is, is the, is the bird doo-doo on there for the kids playing around there, so, yeah, somebody, I, I don't know how, what, maintenance, but that was my only concern. Uh, Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Um, I, uh, would echo all of the comments, and particularly appreciation for the Randalls and everyone who's been involved in, uh, bringing art to our downtown, and we really appreciate it's done an amazing, uh, you know, amount to... It's done an amazing, uh, you know, amount to complement the development efforts and really create a sense of community. So we really do appreciate it. Um, with that, I'd like to, uh, let's see, do we have a, a staff recommendation? Uh, if not, I'd like to move that we, uh, that we accept the artwork, uh, what, are we accepting it on a consignment? Is that what we're doing?
Councilman, the, there is a resolution attached to this if the council wishes to support its retention. The piece is not on, uh, consignment as such, but it is, uh, placed there, and perhaps at some point the artist will sell it, but the city takes no responsibility for.
So the resolution is to allow the piece to remain indefinitely until the artist recalls it?
So, it says on here, it's a temporary 90-day period.
No. The resolution with the, uh, if you go of 3 of 28, you'll see the resolution, and it simply says that the sculpture is approved to remain on display at the current location.
Okay, so I'd move that we would approve the resolution, um, recommended by staff in draft form.
It's on page three of 28.
What is it, page three?
It's also included as part of the recommendation requesting direction, and if the, so desired to adopt City Council Resolution Number 2017, next in order, approving the Public Arts Commission's approved time machine sculpture to remain on display at the current location.
Wait, I missed that. I was busy looking for the resolution.
What are the resolutions?
Oh, okay. What about it? Oh, that's what the motion is? Ah, got it. Okay, Councilmember Rigby, did you wanna say something?
I, I do. I have a question regarding, um, there was ma, a reference made for a petition with some couple hundred signatures. I haven't seen it. It hasn't been presented to us.
I don't believe that staff received it.
So it's not in the record?
We heard about it from Ms. Spinks.
Here it comes.
Or, I'm sorry, from the Randalls, excuse me.
There's one copy.
Little late to, I haven't got a chance to review it, and this is the one and only copy. Okay, I just wanted to know where, where it was, when people make references that they've given us things, we haven't received them. Thank you.
Councilmember Green, did you still wanna say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I was also on the, uh, the online, um, submission of signatures as well, and every time it was signed, I received an email. Thank you so much for that. And I wanna say, I received probably 200 emails, so, um, I just wanna say, I can attest to the online signatures that you don't have in your hand, and, uh, we do get those emails. My phone buzzes every time I get one. Keep sending them. Thank you so much.
Okay, so I have, I have motion, right? Did I get a motion?
In a second.
In a second, okay. So, um, everyone in favor, please cast your votes. Motion passes with one, a no vote. So, congratulations, you guys. We are moving on to our next, um, agenda item, which is discussion item number three, Community Development Block Grant Funding Priorities, and, well, surprise, Assistant City Manager Ali Zimmerman's gonna introduce the item.
Me, I'm keeping the seat warm tonight. Um, yes, this is your CDBG priority item. Housing Manager Amanda Lee will be presenting the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As part of the annual CDBG process, the city seeks community input to assist in developing funding priorities for CDBG funding projects. The city can allocate approximately $117,000 annually towards CDBG public service programs. The city sets aside $32,000 annually in public service funding to contribute to the city's senior center out-and-about transportation program and the Alliance for Regional Solutions made through Operation Hope. The remaining $85,000 can be allocated towards public service programs. The current public service program, project goals include emergency shelter, crime and delinquency prevention programs, support services for seniors, health services including mental health, and emergency assistance. Emergency assistance services are those that tend to persons' basic needs such as food, housing, shelter, transportation, material goods, and utilities. This year, the Housing Division hosted a community meeting, conducted an online survey, and reviewed a report provided by 2-on-1 San Diego that identifies the types of assistance services requested by individuals within Vista zip codes. The top requested needs identified by 2-on-1 were the basic needs. Participants were asked to provide, at the, participants were asked to provide input on the issues they felt were most impacting to the community. The following were identified for public services. It was crime awareness prevention, youth services, handicap services, battered and abused spouses services, abused and neglected children services, mental health services. We were also asked about public improvements, and those include abused and neglected children facilities, homeless facilities, sidewalks, street improvements, childcare centers. Based on the input received from the community and given the limited resources, the current public service goals are targeting the areas of the highest need. Following the direction from City Council, the funding priority recommendations will be incorporated into the request for proposal that will be issued to solicit programs that can assist the city in addressing the identified community needs. The city's ability to meet the goals and address the high priority needs is largely dependent on receiving eligible proposals. Because there is uncertainty at the federal level regarding CDBG's longevity funding, staff recommends allocating public improvement funding towards sidewalk improvements, which can be completed annually without the need of a continuous funding source. Working closely with the community, annually, the city can identify low-income neighborhoods that are in need of sidewalk improvements. Their improvements will enhance safety, walkability, and the aesthetics of their, our community. This completes our report. Ms. Zimmerman and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
And what we're seeking at this time is either your concurrence or any directions you would like to see on public service priorities. These will be incorporated into the RFP that goes out to nonprofits, providing these services that are then reviewed and evaluated by the CDBG Advisory Committee and then come back before the City Council for final approval.
I have one speaker. So Kathleen Boyle. The last one for this, I have two in oral communications.
I'm very happy to see that sidewalks is, um, is a priority. Um, I went to the, the workshop that Ally and another woman gave a few weeks ago about this grant, which I didn't know much about. And, um, that was one of the things that Cindy Odo-Amin and I were talking about was sidewalks. Uh, but I thought that maybe that was considered part of what a city is supposed to do. Um, so, we, we go around the neighborhood, we go around the townsite neighborhood, we talk to people, we ask them, "What do you like about Vista? What don't you like about Vista?" Sidewalks come up, comes up all the time. Um, potholes come up, and I show them the Vista app, and they can take a picture, people like that. Uh, another thing I was thinking of was alighted crosswalks, plural, on Bobier. So a little boy was killed, I think, last summer. Um, I've been on that street, it was a hot day, and the street is, is a hill, and I thought, "If I had to walk to that corner, it would take forever, I'd be so tired." And I had, at my age, was tempted to try to dash across, but there's no way. So, the kind, the kind that's on Vale Terrace, it's, it's, lights up when somebody presses the button, there's no way a motorist could say, "Well, I didn't see that, that person." Um, and failing that, um, the, the notion of community gardens. So we, we like the idea of public art, um, but community gardens have been done in, in many cities. Um, there's a lot of, um, empty lots in District One, the North District, the cycle. Um, and I don't know if the city owns any, or if you would have, I don't know the particulars of that, if you'd have to arrange it with an owner, if there is an owner, but community gardens, um, contribute to mental health. The VA in LA uses community gardens for their, um, veterans who are, you know, coming back and having mental health issues. There's something about putting your hands in the dirt, growing your own vegetables that contributes to mental health. So I think it could help a lot of people and also feel more part of the community and health in general because you're eating all these fresh vegetables. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Councilmember Green.
All right. First of all, thank you so much, uh, for this report, Amanda, and thank you for all the work that you've done on it. Um, I agree with your findings. I also just wanted to thank you for the additional outreach that you did this time around with this particular grant funding. I saw it all over the internet, I, I felt like we really reached out to our community to get some feedback. Um, it looked like your meeting was pretty well attended, um, you know, as well as could be expected. Um, and I really feel like we heard from our community on what they wanted to do. And I think last time this came up, I advised you, "Hey, let's get out there and tell people we have this money and ask them what they want us to do with it." And I really feel like you really took that to heart and did a great job gathering information. So, more than anything, thank you so much. I definitely, uh, agree with the path that you're on here. So thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
With regard to the sidewalk program, um, I apologize if I missed this and you said it. Uh, what percentage or what dollar amount were we, uh, recommending to set aside for that, or have we made that recommendation yet?
Well, that would be based on the allocation of the grant, and we're currently paying off our 108 debt services loan, so we would have approximately between, depending on the allocation, $400,000 to $500,000 annually.
And so the city's proposal, the staff's proposal, is to dedicate that amount, uh, to sidewalk construction?
Yes, um, I, our city engineer advised that sidewalk improvements can cost for just repairs of sidewalks, if there's already current concrete. Everything would be ADA compliant, and that would run you, per block, between $50,000 to $70,000 per block. So we can roughly get between eight to 10 sidewalks a year with that.
Eight to 10 blocks? Is that, was that?
It's eight to 10 blocks, that is correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, I've got a block in mind, uh, so if somebody would ask me about that later. Is that, and, um, so right now, we're, we're opening the RFP for, uh, our nonprofits and agencies to come, uh, to us in January for a workshop and then make proposals by February?
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, with that said, then, uh, and are we adopting a resolution to do that?
No, at this point, we're looking for direction of the funding priorities that we can include in the RFP.
Okay, very good. All right, thanks.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know that you responded to my question, uh, and emailed me, but I wanted to get further clarification. I, I read your email, and I, I, it didn't answer my question, I don't think, about, uh, the 56 surveys that were received, 46 of the responders were Vista residents.
Yes.
The other 10 included Vista business owners, professional service provider, service agency provider, which I'm assuming is a public agency versus a private agency, and Other. I'm really curious, if Other wasn't a Vista resident, or a Vista business, or a service provider, public or private, who is Other?
Other was identified as, we were able to go back, and they were identified as a part-time recreation person. Um, I'm assuming that was someone who was employed part-time, and then there was actually two Other, and the other one was, they said they live a few blocks from the city of Vista.
Okay. Interesting. Um, and, and looking at the categories that were discussed, um, let's see, where'd I put it? Public improvements and then public services. And in the publics, public improvements, and you're talking about sidewalks, but also in the category here of the top five, um, street improvements and sidewalks tied in rank. What are we looking at as far as street improvements? Can you go over that again? I'm so sorry.
Yeah, street improvements are a little bit more difficult, um, because it can't be for maintenance, so potholes was something that was mentioned, that would be a repair, so that wouldn't be something we would be able to do. It would have to be an actual improvement instead of maintenance. Um, so it's really kind of hard to fit something into street improvements. It would be like widening the street to put in bike lanes, but it's also really limited to, you can't do main thoroughfares, you would have to do in neighborhoods. And so, I mean, that is a direction we could go, but it, it would be more costly, and it, there's not as much of neighborhoods that we, we can find that fit into the criteria that CDBG requires.
Would street lighting be considered a street improvement?
Street lighting is something that's also in a category that we can include as well. We can definitely do, we can look into street lighting. Um, the only concern is if there's a, you know, a, a fee to keep that lighting maintained and CDBG goes away, you know, we'd have to look into alternative methods as well.
Um, because I, I would like to see if we can use this, this money. I agree with looking at sidewalks because, uh, getting sidewalks in our city and the different neighborhoods, uh, is imperative, as we've learned and heard. But also, streetlights, and we have a couple of entire neighborhoods without a single streetlight, and I, I can name them for you if you, you know, want, want my blocks. Uh, we can, we could put your sidewalks in and, and some streetlights. So I would like to see us work with the CD, with this CDBG monies on, on these types of things for our communities. I'd like to focus on, on community development in that respect. And then when we are looking at, um, funding other programs, I would like to see us focus on programs that help our foster youth who have aged out of the system. We only have one program in the community that I know of that works with them and is very limited, and, uh, I see a, a real need for that in our community. And I'm sad to think that that is a population that is so incredibly underserved through no fault of their own. So I would really like to see us do what we can and put some money into programs that are working with the foster youth. And then on the, also on public improvements, on the combined high, medium counts, and I think it's six of 39. Senior centers, parks, and recreation, okay, street lighting. I don't know, how are we on our senior center makeover? Is everything done that we are anticipating doing, or is it in the process?
The project's still in process, but at this point, I believe it has the funding it needs. It's just a matter of getting through all of the, the programming elements without impacting the services that are going on in the facility at the same time. So it's been phased in.
There's a restroom improvement, and then they're gonna do the computer lab in the other room.
So, but it has all the funding that we're anticipating. We've already funded it. Um, so I'm circling back to Bub Williamson Park, and maybe you, we could hit a couple of these with the one, you know, two birds with one stone thought process, and that, for the, um, adult activity equipment and the senior, I, some of them, and I, I have them on my vision board in my office, and I've talked about them before, um, would that be something that we could use this money to provide in that park?
Well, Bub Williamson is actually currently being funded by CDBG, so there is money allocated towards that park, and it hasn't been, it's just been funded towards Bub Williamson. We can definitely take a look and see, um, anything with ADA qualifies for CDBG. Um, it really kind of depends on if it's, um, if it's, if it's a need, you can't just go and plant a tree because you wanna plant a tree, it can't be aesthetic, so we'd have to look at each line item and determine that at that time. But it is a possibility.
Okay.
We put, um, over a little, we put over $700,000 towards CD, uh, towards Bub Williamson Park and CDBG.
The Bub Williamson Park budget does include that funding source holding to do those things that it will qualify for already with prior year's CDBG funding.
Okay, okay. So that's my, my thought process on where I'd like to see the money go. I'd like to see it go into community development and foster youth programs, uh, primarily.
I did wanna make a comment, um, about foster youth, is Casa de Amparo, they are an organization that also does, um, aged-out foster youth, and they do apply for CDBG funding. Um, however, they are located in San Marcos, and we do give higher priority for Vista services, so.
So, and, and, and maybe that would be, I, I know that now, it changed a couple of years ago, that the minimum that we can give is $10,000. And I know that we have the one, um, I think it's North County Lifeline that does work with, uh, foster youth. And, um, we have a lot of programs that we've been giving money to over the years, and I, over the last couple of years, I, I'm looking at maybe consolidating where we put that money to get the biggest bang for our buck. And if that, to me, the foster youth really have been neglected i, in society. Uh, they age out of the program with absolutely nothing and no place to go, and that's, that's just unconscionable to me. So I'm a huge fan. So, I'm a huge fan of what they're doing at Lifeline. And so, I'd like to see, you know, monies that we have that we can put toward that. And if that means, you know, giving them more than the $10,000, I'm okay with that. And maybe streamlining some of the other ones that we've done in the past and really focusing, drilling down onto being very effective with the funding that we have. I seem to, I feel like we've been spreading it out so much. I'd like to see us come back with a little bit more focus on what we're doing with our money. But those are, those are my priorities, the community development that we can do in our, in our community, and then the foster youth and the seniors. That's, that's where I'd like to see us do our focus. Thank you. And great report, by the way. So, I really appreciate all of your work in this.
Deputy Mayor.
You know, one thought that I forgot to ask about earlier is if we're going to be pouring sidewalks, what about pouring curb and gutter at the same time? And what's the economy of doing both at the same time?
I would say that if we're going to go into neighborhoods and we're going to buy right away and we're going to take the effort, we're going to do curb, gutter, and sidewalk to make a lasting effect.
Okay, that was my question, is was it a package deal? Thank you. The other thing I was going to say, you know, in my neighborhood, we pay into the street lighting special district. If we did have money to install lamps, perhaps we could do a deal with the residents where if they would vote a special district to pay for the electric, then we would find a, make it a priority to find the money for the lamps. That way, it's not an ongoing cost center. That may be, I may be diverging too far from the...
Deputy Mayor, it's actually, it's kind of the other way around. Based on the engineering assessment report that's done each year for the LMD, any new light poles that are included would then be spread. And everyone pays the basic amount that covers the kind of citywide benefit. And then, neighborhoods that have more lighting or local traffic signals pay a larger benefit. So, people's property taxes would be reassessed based on that year's level of service. So, it would go the other way around.
Are we actively recruiting people to come into that district so that we can increase the amount of lighting?
The district covers the entire city.
Oh, it does.
Correct. And not private streetlights wouldn't be accounted for in the overall.
But there's two of them. One pays for lighting the arterials and the other is residential. I found this out after detailed discussion on the subject. I pay into two different lighting districts. Remember, Turco came to Vista and accused us of having a lighting district, and the guy over on Sunset who had no lamps was out in the dark going, why am I paying for this? And I went to see Mr. Johnson and said, why is Turco here saying this? What's the deal? And he explained to me in great depth that there is lighting landscaping for the arterial roadways, which is one.
General benefit that everyone pays, every property owner.
Then there's an additional, what's the name of the one I pay into to light my neighborhood street?
So, it's the same district, what Ms. Zimmerman stated, but there's a general fee. So, if you don't have any light, special lights in front of your house, you pay a general fee. And then, if you have lights on your street, then you pay the special benefit fee.
Well, and I'm sorry I'm going so far down the rabbit hole here, but then why aren't we just putting up lights everywhere all over Vista?
It doesn't cover the whole cost.
That covers the operational.
Okay, so, but now, we're full circle to my original comment, which was if we can find the money for the lamps, can we pay for them through the lighting and landscaping district?
So, if residents have lights in front of them, regardless of how they get there, that are, that are city-owned, they will pay the operational fee. But what we've done in the past, and to try to clarify, for neighborhoods that have come in and said, hey, we don't have lights. We would like lights. What can we do? There's two options. And one option is they can go through SDGNE. And if there's an SDGNE pole, SDGNE will put a light on there, and that's the most affordable option. And then, they will bill either the homeowner that's nearest or a group of homeowners, I'm not sure exactly how it works. And then, another option is to form a CFD for an area and have them basically take out a loan and they pay off the lights over a 10-year period has been the last case that we had. And that's how they got the lights in their area. And then, the monthly or the yearly charge in this case is what Ms. Zimmerman was referring to, and that's the CFD charge.
Well, I don't know that, I don't know that I'm necessarily joining on the idea, but I thought it was a good suggestion to examine whether we could use these funds. I mean, if we're going to build, you know, I'm just saying at this point, I'd like more information on it.
And I want to add one thing on the infrastructure for lighting. It's not just about putting a pole up, but it's also about trenching or undergrounding and boring and connecting all of those lights to a central facility. And it's, and it's very expensive. And that's why, as staff, when we talk about the biggest bang for the buck, our recommendation is sidewalks because it's probably the most dire need in some parts of the city, and that has such a lasting effect going forward. Lights do too. Lights are important, don't get me wrong. But the biggest bang for our buck that doesn't have an ongoing operational expense to it for the most part is sidewalks.
I guess the other thing I'm getting at is if we're not actively out knocking on people's doors from time to time, asking them if they want to get streetlights and explaining to them how they're paid for, and asking them if they want to come into the CFD or pay more for the ongoing, what kind of outreach? I'll follow up on this later. We don't need to continue on this during this subject, but that's a question I have.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess what I'm looking at is sidewalks. That's, I think, huge for me. As the city manager stated, biggest bang for our buck. But not only that, I think it's just necessary. And we have a lot of areas that are, have been neglected in the past, and I think we need to fix it, you know? And if we have these monies available, I think this is the best use of our money. It will make the city look better. It'll make it safer for all people that are living in those neighborhoods. I, as far as the other 15%, I think the senior programs are high on my list, like the Out and About and other programs that we can support. Homeless families, like Operation Hope does a great job. I know that's usually part of our CDBG. Crime and delinquency prevention, I think that's really important. I just, was at a great program earlier today, which is a graduation of fourth and fifth graders who have spent the last several months being educated on how to avoid gangs, drugs, bullying, how to deal with bullying. And I think that's something that's very important. I think it's been very successful in our city. I think it's, our city is a lot safer than it was 30 years ago. And I think the sheriff can attest to that. I think part of it's the job that they're doing. These people were there this morning. I appreciate what you guys do. Long day for you guys. So, they're not always out there doing traffic stops and chasing down the bad guys. They're doing the prevention from the front side. And so, I know that the great program, the state has actually defunded that. So, if we can find a way to fund that program or something like that program, I think that would be money well-spent, not only for the short term, but for the long term of Vista as well. And I think the biggest thing for me overall, and I'd like to get some feedback from other council members, is I'd really like to see our money spent here in Vista, in Vista alone. You have a list of other cities and their CDBG funds. They can do whatever they think they need to do with those funds in their cities. I don't think we should take our monies and spend them in programs outside of our city.
And as Ms. Lee mentioned, we do have a priority for Vista-based businesses. An example from years past, when food, food issues were a high need or a high priority of the council, the San Diego Food Bank, not in Vista, serving Vista residents. And with your CDBG funds, when they do apply, one of the things, if they're awarded the funding, that they have to provide, Ms. Lee, on a quarterly basis, is how many Vista residents they're serving. They need to use the Vista funds for Vista residents, even if they're not in the program. So, depending on the priorities, we do focus on Vista, or at least those that are helping Vista.
Okay. And then, the last thing that I kind of forgot to tie in with the crime and delinquency, and that is, you know, supporting the Boys and Girls Club, I think is very big because that falls right under that, keep those kids busy. And thank you. Did a great job.
And I guess it's my turn, and I actually agree with John. I want to, Operation Hope is really important, I think, and Out and About, those two programs are really important, that we continue those. I also like the crime and delinquency, the great program of the Junior Deputy Program. The Junior Deputy Program, I'm not sure, it was funded by the...
The Junior Deputy is a grant called the Justice Assistance Grant. That one will likely maintain. CALGRIP, which is a different grant, is the one that Councilwoman Aguilera, it ends at the end of this calendar year. They have replaced it with a smaller program. CALGRIP stood for Gang Resistance Intervention and Prevention. It's been replaced with something called CALVIP, which is Violence Intervention and Prevention. Good news, we have a very low violent crime rate in Vista. But what that means is we will not be that competitive for CALVIP funding. We will be applying for it, and if we're successful, it will be for similar programs that we implemented under CALGRIP. If we're not successful, we'll be looking at different funding sources to continue those programs.
And we are the only city in, I think in San Diego area, or maybe out of San Diego County, that does the Junior Deputy Program. And I think it's really important. They had a huge class, I think it was, I want to say 70 kids that graduated this last time. It's like a six-week program, and they were regular deputies. And that's a great program, as well as the great program is. So, I go for those. I'd like to see our money spent in Vista, and I don't want to, I don't like to have too many things. I absolutely support the sidewalk program, but I, it's like peanut butter. You want to spread it out too thin and you don't get anything very much done. So, I'd like to keep it kind of narrow and with just maybe those things. So, that's my feedback. Is that, so, I guess that's everybody? Do you have enough information? Or do you need more?
I think we, I think we're pretty much set on the priorities. Thank you this evening.
Okay, thank you. Did a great job on the report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, so that takes care of that one. Our next discussion item is D4, Appointments of Officials to Boards, Committees, and Commissions. And I have, we have a list of everybody. It's pretty much the same as it was last year. Just like, just a couple of different, so what do we need to do with that? Do you want to talk about it or go over it? Or you, Deputy Mayor, if you want to?
I'd make a motion that we approve the resolutions that have been drafted and presented by staff.
Okay. Okay. With no more discussion, I would say please cast your votes, I guess. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the next one, which is our appointment of Deputy Mayor. Anybody? Councilmember Green?
I have reviewed the past deputy mayors, and I think that Deputy Mayor John Franklin has done an amazing job this year as Deputy Mayor. Thank you so much for all that you've done for our city, sir. At this point, in looking at everything, and, you know, I'm kind of thinking it's probably either myself or Councilmember Aguilera. I really would like another year of council under my belt personally, before I come to be Deputy Mayor. And I think Councilmember Aguilera would do a great job at it, seeing as how Councilmember Rigby was, and then it went to Councilman Franklin. I would be super happy with Councilmember Aguilera as the Deputy Mayor next year personally. So, that's my take.
Thank you, Joe.
Deputy Mayor?
I would second that. And I had a kind of a thought that I wanted to make a request of you, Madam Mayor, and also of our next Deputy Mayor, which is simply a request that as often as possible, now that we're in districts, I have tried over this past year to, to give opportunities. I think each of you at times have received a call from Doris and said, you know, the Deputy Mayor wants to know if you'd like to be the primary. So, my request is now that we're in districts, if possible, if you would be amenable to reaching out, either the Deputy Mayor or the Mayor, and doing everything possible to bring in the district representative whenever the specific events are located within that member's district. And just keep an eye toward maximum opportunity for, you know, participation from the district representative. So, if it's in...
That you're saying, if it's in your district, sure you come to those things?
Yes, please. Yeah. Yep, yep.
Okay. That's no problem.
Yep, I appreciate that very much.
Okay. And so, we have a motion and a second? Okay? Everyone in favor, cast your votes? Or not in favor, cast your votes. Please cast your votes. I said that wrong. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Congratulations, John.
Appreciate it.
Now, I get to turn it over to you. Okay, so I have two speakers here for oral communications. First Chad Spinks. Is Chad still? Oh, there you are. You moved up to the front.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you. I wanted to comment on my observations of the skate park and the current conditions. It appears that the punitive measures that are in place against the skate park are having unintended consequences and are not, they're only exacerbating the problem that we're having down there. By keeping the lights out, the lights-out policy is not deterring people from hanging out at the skate park. After hours, there's people hanging out there at all times. And all it does is discourage any families or people who want to go down there with their kids to go down there and hang out. And if we want to combat the deviant element that's hanging out there, like you have to make it welcoming to families. And I was really discouraged on Sunday. I drove by there just to check it out around dusk, drove down the alleyway and saw what appeared to be a full-grown adult woman standing in between the dumpsters, who was shielding her daughter, who was trying to urinate in privacy. The restrooms have been closed for, I have no idea how long, but I heard that they just reopened them. But I don't know how we expect to turn this into a welcoming environment if we're keeping the lights off and locking the restrooms and not having any proper trash receptacles. There's trash everywhere. There's a couple of plastic trash bins, but they're practically useless because skateboarders want to put it down and jump over it. You got to have some permanent structure, concrete, trash receptacles in there. Otherwise, you're just going to continue having the same problems. But, yeah, as a, as a resident and taxpayer who looked forward to having the skate park here, I live five minutes away, five-minute walk from the skate parks, and I can't use it at this time of year because it's dark at 5:00. I get off of work at 5:00 and it's pretty much useless to me. So, yeah, I mean, I'd be open to talk to anybody. We've been having conversations with our art group about what we can do to kind of help. We're open to having a discussion with City Council or anybody who's willing to listen to help make it better because I think the punitive measures are not doing any good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Kelly McCormick.
Good evening. I'm Kelly McCormick, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I just want to say again that I appreciate the fact that you have a ban on pot businesses and to encourage you to keep that in place. And having worked with a lot of teenagers and young people involved and in sometimes trying to get out of addiction to pot, we see that the more available it is, obviously, the more people who are going to use it. And we've also seen that cities that have strong language banning pot fare much better against the commercial pot people that come in from all of... against the commercial pot people that come in from all over the state to try to set up shop in your city. We've seen that cities with vague language or that demonstrate a lot of waffling tend to have them come out in droves to try to influence the decision for the city where they don't even live most of the time. So thank you for sending a strong message. I think that's definitely had a result. And I would also like to remind you that as the laws are changing, cities would be well-served to broaden the focus beyond just the business of marijuana, but also to consider the public health implications, including the fact that even back in 2009, the state of California identified it as a human carcinogen. So go figure. And try to figure that one out and why they are limiting cigarettes and tobacco, but encouraging marijuana use. So I just wanted to thank you for that, and it also, I'm sure, plays a big part in the crime and delinquency prevention effort that you mentioned, because certainly we know that marijuana does encourage and lead to crime and delinquency. So thank you, and keep up the good work.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Okay, that's the end of our oral communications, and so then we're going to go to our remarks. And I think I'll ask maybe Patrick to go first and give us an update on the fire, maybe a slow fire report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. As all of you know, last Thursday, there was a fire in Bonzal that started off the 15 freeway that affected not just the residents of Bonzal, most severely Bonzal, but also the surrounding communities. The fire burned approximately 4,100 acres. It destroyed 151 structures and damaged 56 structures. I believe there was over 1,600 personnel from all around the state, in particular with the county, the state. We had, I think, five or six states involved as well that sent personnel. And so there was the full force on this fire. It was a lilac fire. And the city operated our EOC as well in anticipation that the fire may jump to 76 and may come into our borders as well as our fire district borders. So point of that is we were prepared in trying to plan for how we would deal with this emergency. There was a part of our city, the northern part, that was evacuated, mandatory evacuations. And so we did our best job as we could to get the word out, to communicate with residents, especially via social media, and let them know what was happening and where to go. And so I just want to thank the firefighters, our fire chief and his command staff, who not only were part of the incident command structure, but also in our emergency operations center, as well as our sheriff's captain, excuse me, Chuck Senemo, who was the law enforcement on that side, the incident command, and his lieutenants who participated in our EOC, as well as the deputies who kept the peace. And so thanks to everybody, and we're very grateful that it didn't come into the borders of Vista. But we're also sad at the same time for everybody in Bonzal who was affected. So just wanted to give you that update. I had some other updates, but do you want me to do those at the end?
Yeah, maybe. Okay. And because I want to, because I want to thank the responders too, the first responders, our fire department, oh my gosh. And being, I was in Tokyo, and I was, and being far away, not knowing if I was going to come home and have a house, you know, or whatever, it was very scary. But I want to thank the first responders and the sheriff and Andrea and our staff that kept the communications going. I mean, I was reading on the Next Door thing. I was getting all the communications, so I kept waking up in the middle of the night and checking things to make sure everything was okay. But it was very scary to be far away and then have that be happening here. So I want to just thank all the first responders and tell them how much I appreciate them and all of the work they did to keep, to control that fire and keep it, we did. And sadly, we did lose some horses and homes, and that's very sad. But very grateful for that they got it contained when they did. So anyway, so that's, and I'll go on down, then I'll do my announcements, and you can do yours, but I'll go on down the way here.
Yeah, I just wanted to also thank the fire department for keeping my house safe. It's kind of weird to actually be evacuated, even though I don't think it was that close, but it was close enough. It's kind of scary and not a pleasant experience evacuating. So I do want to thank the fire department. Also want to thank the sheriff department for all they do, because I know that a lot of people overlook the fact that they've got to keep the peace at these, in these emergency situations. On top of that, I really want to thank Andrea, because I think she made the city look very I think all of staff, you know, should be thanked, because I've got a lot of people out in the community that were thanking me for keeping them informed. And so you guys make us look good. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby?
I just also want to add my thanks to staff and to the sheriff's department and to our Vista firefighters, as well as CAL FIRE and all of the other agencies that helped during this fire. It was pretty intense for some people, and I know people who were evacuated, and I know people who lost horses. So this one, you know, we see the fires throughout our state, and we watch them on TV, but they're very far removed. And this one hit home, literally, for some people here. And I think you did a stellar job for us. You did a fantastic job protecting our city. And in the last couple of years, we've heard a lot of complaints from constituents about communication from the city. And that was so not the case in this situation. And I have to say hat tip and mad props to Andrea and your staff for the communication to our constituents. And we have had many, many compliments and kudos and emails and phone calls and Facebook posts, saying what a great job in the communication and getting the information out to the city on what was happening as it was happening. And so I want to say thank you for doing that, for everything that you've done for us. And Merry Christmas, everyone. I don't think I'll see you between now and Christmas, so have a very, very Merry Christmas.
Deputy Mayor Franklin?
Now Councilman Franklin.
Now I got to figure that out every time. I'll be calling everybody.
Right. I just want to echo all the comments, thanking all of our first responders, particularly those who worked throughout the night, and also a lot of our city staff who worked throughout the night, several different nights, for all their hard work, and those who were in harm's way. And our firefighters who immediately rushed to the fire and were part of the effort to contain the fire. We appreciate their bravery and sacrifice, and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Councilmember Green?
All right. Thank you all for staying for the entire meeting, first of all. Really appreciate it, even staff in the back. Thank you. I do want to give props to VVBA. They're not here right now, but they threw the best winter fest that I've ever seen in Vista, and I was really proud to be a Vistaan. So I'm looking forward to next year. Their report was much better this year than it was last year too, even though it was on our consent calendar, so that was good. Also, happy late birthday to Kevin Hamm. Told him I was going to sing to him, but I'm going to spare you guys all of that. Chad Spinks, I wanted to thank you for the update on the skate park. You being down there and being our eyes and ears on the ground is huge. I was also contacted by Alec Beck of the Tony Hawk Foundation about that same issue. Maybe we can put some programs in place. So I'm going to be working with him, and I'll also have him get in touch with the city to see what we can do to make that more family-friendly and make it a great amenity for our city like we want to. Since we've already had so many skate parks go down, we don't want this to be the case. We want this one to last. We want this one to be fantastic. And some of the measures you spoke of were kind of us trying to, you know, put our foot down and, hey, this is a nice place. So thank you for that. Also prayers for everyone who lost their home. My wife's aunt actually lost her home, which I just sold her less than two months ago. And they had moved all of their stuff from their other property into their new home, which I just listed their old home last Friday, and they now have had to move back into their old home with none of their possessions that they previously had. So this fire really put things in perspective, I think, for the community, even the people who were evacuated, just thinking about what's important. And when it comes down to what's important, I think that this was a reality check for all of Vista, and I think we all came together as a family. Our firefighters did a great job. Our first responders did a great job. And I also had on my notes, for Andrea McCullough, you made us look so fantastic, and social media presence was great. The citizens knew what was going on, and you did a great job. So thank you guys all so much.
Okay, and let's see, and I have a couple of announcements here, then I'll turn to Patrick's announcement. Construction is underway in the next phase of Paseo Santa Fe, the improvement project. The crews are beginning at Ocean View, and they're going to work towards Civic Center Drive. So for more information on that construction, register for e-notices on the city website. And if you're leaving town for the holidays, you can contact the Vista Sheriff Senior Patrol for vacation home checks. Their number is 760-940-4434 to set up service, and they're really good. They've watched my home when I've been on vacation before, and even my son-in-law came and couldn't prove that he could be there. He was getting my mail. So anyway, they're very good. You put down whoever you want to be at your house, and they'll come and check on it to be sure that you're not getting broken into. So anyway, those are my announcements. I'll turn it to Patrick.
Thank you, Mayor. And speaking of the fire, I want to congratulate Chief Hahn for staying awake during this meeting. He's in the back there, but he spent four straight days with his staff on the fire, and so I know he put a lot of effort into that. So I know he's a little groggy. With the fire, the county set up a local assistance center to assist the victims, and that is at the library at 700 Eucalyptus Avenue. And so the victims or people that were potentially or were affected by the fire can go to the local assistance center, and they have full county staff there that can help people, insurance companies, you name it. And so the hours of operation are 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and it's just opposite of the Civic Center in the parking lot, so we encourage people that were victims to go there. Beginning this week is going to be the construction of the roundabout at Vale Terrace in Ponderosa. So this is done in an effort to reduce speeding and improve safety for pedestrians, so that'll be going on this week. And the proposed Shatterage Drive and Live Oak Roundabout discussion will actually take place now on January 3rd, which is the next Traffic Commission meeting at 6:00 PM. The prior Traffic Commission meeting on December 6th was canceled due to a lack of a quorum. So wanted to make sure the public knew that. And lastly, city offices will be closed Christmas week, and then will reopen on January 2nd. And so trash pickup will be delayed the week of December 25th, as well as January 1st. And other than that, just wanted to wish everybody a happy holidays.
Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we are adjourned at 8:14.